I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public School District 39 for Monday, November 16th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here, and I can't hear for some reason. The clerk.
Here.
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 Perfect. Thank you. So we are now going to move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Principal Alan Dumbao will now introduce a video of Harper students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hello, I am Aaron Dubno, the principal at Harper Elementary. Today, I have some KEEP 39 or Kindergarten Enrichment and Enhancement Program students here to help lead us in the pledge. Before these students lead us in the pledge, I first ask them one of their favorite parts about KEEP this school year. So students, please share a favorite part about KEEP and then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
My favorite part is PE.
My favorite part is color.
My favorite part is going to the park.
Park. I like going to the park.
Extra games.
STEM class.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That was awesome. Always good to hear the voices of our students. Now, we're going to move on to the minutes. I seek a motion to approve the October 26, 2020 Board of Education minutes.
I move to approve the Board of Education Monday, October 26, 2020 minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion having been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? I can't see everybody in one screen, so if there's somebody I'm missing, give me a shout out. Okay, seeing none. I think we have to do a roll call, actually, because I'm remote.
That's correct.
So will the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti.
Yes.
Frank Panzico.
Yes.
Amy Palin.
Yes.
Mark Steen.
Yes.
Alan Sternwiler.
Yes.
Aaron Stone.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes. And the motion carries by general consent. Thank you, everyone. So I'm, we are now going to adjourn to a public hearing on the 2020 levy. I request a motion to adjourn to the public hearing on the 2020 levy.
I move to adjourn to the public hearing on the 2020 levy.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, we will now.
Call the roll. John Caesaretti.
Yes.
Frank Panzico.
Yes.
Amy Palin.
Yes.
Mark Steen.
Yes.
Alan Sternwiler.
Yes.
Aaron Stone.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes. Thank you. We are now adjourned to the levy hearing. I hereby call to order this 2020 levy hearing for Willmet Public Schools District 39. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Here. Mark Steen.
Here.
Alan Sternwiler.
Here.
Aaron Stone.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here. Great. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Kremiscoli to start the financial presentations.
Thank you, and I am proud to present Corey Boltmeyer, who is going to provide the board and the community with a review of our fiscal year 2020 financial audit.
Thank you. Financial audit and the 2020 levy, just a few words I wanted to share with everyone. Baker Tilly, the district's audit firm, has completed their audit of the district's 2020 financial statements. District 39 received an audit opinion with the highest level of assurance that Baker Tilly can give on an audit. It was an unqualified opinion. Additionally, the auditor's communication to the, to the board had no audit findings or issues to report. Each year, the Illinois State Board of Education, as part of the annual financial report, assigns a financial profile score to each school district. We're happy to report that District 39 has once again received the highest possible score and rating. The category is financial recognition, and the district has received this high rating for, for well over a decade now. The 2020 financial statements include positive results as multiple budget to actual variances ended up in the District 39's favor. This led the district's operating funds increase to during fiscal year 2020 and now stand at 70%, approximately 70% of operating fund expenditures. The fiscal year 2020 audited financial statements are on the agenda for board approval later this evening. Just as a side, this was the first year the district had made the switch to Baker Tilly. And even though it was, it's always tough in the first year of an audit and then add an extra labor, layer of difficulty with everybody being remote versus, you know, in the same office environment, you know, to still be able to, as Nick pointed out last week, you know, with Baker Tilly, having, I think he set up around 60 school district clients, you know, to still receive the level of service that we were expecting and to, you know, get everything done on time, I think, was something that we were all really happy with. Not to mention the, you know, the positive results and the, and the no audit finding. So that's pretty much it. If anybody has any questions?
Thank you, Corey. I see Frank with his hand up.
Okay, thank you for that report. I know a lot of work goes into that. I wanted to just highlight two things. One, the, the score of 4.0 is not something that everybody gets. It's something that we've gotten used to, and what it means is that as a community, we're doing a good job of having good procedures, but also being responsible with the money. You mentioned as a second point, then, that our reserves had climbed a little bit because of fortuitous cost savings due to COVID. This year, we'll have unfortunate cost increases because of COVID. But we also have introduced the policy that said if reserves get above a certain level, that we'll discuss why they're there and what should be done. And that has been teed up for our next Committee of the Whole meeting. So that's the first time we've used that, and this is why we're doing it. In this case, there is a reason, a plus and a minus, but it still means it's a chance for us to look at where we are and why we're there.
Yeah, just one other thing I would add to that is, you know, as we were winding up the audit process and I, and I had talked with Nick, the audit partner at Baker Tilly, you know, one of the things that maybe didn't make it into our formal communication letter, but he was very complimentary of the district, is that he could tell, like, what you just mentioned, there's a, there's a, there's a plan, right? That, you know, like, nothing happens by accident of this level. He was very complimentary, something like you said, it does, it's not everywhere to have that long plan. Okay, we're here. What are we going to do for the next several years? And then, you know, taking that look of like, are we still in good shape? So he was very complimentary of not only what the district had previously done, but what we had, you know, in the pipeline to, to plan as a district, so.
Great. Are there other questions or comments?
I would, I would say something.
Oh, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I think, I think we, you know, we, we definitely had a really good discussion with the audit partner. And wanted you and, you and Carrie to know that we do appreciate all the effort that went into what you did. I think we, I think we feel like we have a really good understanding of our finances as a group. And, you know, and you've, you've been very responsive to all the requests, so we do really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, should we move on to the 2020 levy?
All right.
Corey, can I ask you to move the microphone a little bit closer? That will help maybe put it on the side of your computer. It'll help.
District 39, for the 2020 levy, District 39 is required by law to estimate at a public board meeting, the 2020 tax levy at least 20 days prior to the board's adoption of the tax levy. This estimation was done at the October 26th board meeting. The tax levy is up for adoption later this evening. Is the exact same as the one presented last month. The total tax levy, levy request exclusive of debt service is for $57,671,648, which is 4.49% higher than last year's actual tax extension. The CPI factor applicable to this tax levy is 2.3%. Existing taxpayers within the District 39 boundaries should expect their, see their District 39 portion of their 2020 tax bill increased by approximately 2.3%. The administration recommends that the board adopts the 2020 tax levy later this evening.
Just one comment, because sometimes people get confused on this. The average rate for existing taxpayers will go up by 2.3, but there will be some for whom it goes up more and some for whom it goes up less. So just so the taxpayers know, if they don't see 2.3%, that's not because what we said isn't accurate. It's because they're just not the, the average.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I mean, one of the biggest, you know, obviously, there's, you know, kind of the general guideline, but, you know, for anybody who might fall outside of that, that guideline, you know, everybody, every taxpayer's bill is really just one, you know, your one piece of the overall pie. So, you know, what happens from year to year, you know, yes, it matters what happens to your individual property, but it also matters what's happening to everybody else. So it is certainly possible that we could see some people, you know, vary from that a little bit.
Is there more discussion? Board members, questions, discussion?
I just want to say, Corey, you gave a really fantastic presentation on this to our Committee of the Whole. And I think you have paperwork that went with that. If you can also, I don't know if there's a way to post that, or if you did, I think from the Committee of the Whole meeting, but it was just so well done. I applaud you for that because it really made it very accessible. I know we posted all of this legally. We, we actually didn't have to post and do this hearing, but we do anyway. But it just was really nice. It made it very accessible for people that are not financial wizards to understand the process and, and how you, how we get through this and to the tax levy. So I thank you for that, and I think it's good information that everyone should be able to see.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Fabulous. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to the audience response to the 2020 levy presentation. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the board regarding the 2020 levy. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? I can't see. Are there people in the audience this evening? Yes?
There are people in the audience this evening. We are fortunate to have several members of the audience. Would anyone like to address the board during the levy hearing portion of this evening's meeting?
If so, please come forward. I want to remind all guests to use the microphone, state your name and community of residence, and by board directive, you are allowed three minutes.
Lisa, it looks like they're declining.
Okay, well, there's more opportunity later in the meeting. So, Tony, do we have any public comments sent by email regarding the 2020 levy?
No, not regarding levy.
Okay, fabulous. Then it is, I request a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting.
I move to adjourn to the regular meeting of the Board of Education.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti.
Yes.
Frank Panzico.
Yes.
Amy Palin.
Yes.
Mark Steen.
Yes.
Alan Sternwiler.
Yes.
Aaron Stone.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes. Motion carries, and we are now adjourned to the regular Board of Education meeting. And Nancy, can I just say whatever changed? I can hear you now. So thank you.
She picked up the microphone.
Okay, great. I hate to say it, but I think we have to do another roll call to get back to the regular meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Frank Panzico.
Here.
Amy Palin.
Here.
Mark Steen.
Here.
Alan Sternwiler.
Here.
Aaron Stone.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here. Okay, and I'm sorry, everybody, if I'm going to cause you to have roll call fatigue by the end of the meeting. So we are going to start with board reports, starting with the committees. I'm going to start with the Facility Committee. Ms. Sternwiler, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Fabes. At the Committee of the Whole, the Facility Development Committee met with Colby Lewis of STR Architects, who provided construction plan details for the Mackenzie and Ramona KEEP 39 classrooms. The Mackenzie construction includes interior renovation to expand the cafeteria in addition, and the addition of three classrooms, a suite of offices, two restrooms, and converting a typical classroom into a kindergarten classroom that has an entry addition with cubbies and a restroom. Ramona has two areas of construction in addition to the north, to the north, adding two classrooms and an office, and three small group conference room spaces near the existing entranceway. Mr. Papa Nicholas of Nicholas and Associates stated he performs multiple budget checks and balances throughout each project. His second round estimates for Mackenzie, for the Mackenzie base bid at this time is estimated at $4.6 million. And Ramona, the base bid is just over $3 million. He stated there would be two more rounds of budget refinements in which he hopes the unforeseen soil samples, they're, sorry, he hopes that the unforeseen soil sample issues that they found, there, there were some. None that were of huge concern, but they do have to be dealt with. He is hoping that those can be removed and dealt with, with little extra cost. And noted that the soil samples might have to be removed or reinforced to ensure a stable foundation. He said the soil samples are pinpoint areas and may not be representative of the entire footprint of the areas. The estimate included $75,000 for soil contingency. The fiscal year 2021 budget for the Capital Projects Fund included money for the additional of air conditioning to the second floor classrooms at the junior high. We discussed this. This project has been included in the list of capital projects to be completed in the summer of 2021. And Dr. Kremiscoli noted that the project was to be completed last summer, but we postponed it due to the Village Stormwater Project. Mr. Boltmeyer stated that the project is embedded in the fiscal year 21, 22 capital project timeline and would piggyback with life safety work that we have planned. He suggested that STR begin to prepare architectural drawings to go out to bid and then decide whether to pursue the project. Mr. Lewis noted procuring air conditioning equipment such as chillers, such as chillers is taking about 16 weeks and perhaps even longer with the pandemic. He said if the district plans to pursue this project next year, the decision would need to be made now. The board had a lengthy discussion regarding all three construction projects and the costs, and the costs that would be incurred in the midst of this pandemic. We all agreed that an update on the overall budget was needed along with cost estimates for design, construction, and COVID-19 in order to explore the impact on the budget and whether to proceed with all three projects. I would say whether and how to proceed. Mr. Lewis suggested breaking the air conditioning project into two bids. The first to obtain the equipment and the second for installation. We all agreed to proceed with the design process for the air conditioning project, as we all know how very, very important that project is for the second floor of the junior high school. So that is my report, and I will turn it back to you, President Fabes.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move to School Finance Committee. Mr. Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Fabes. So the School Finance Committee also met on the 9th. Mr. Boltmeyer, our business manager, introduced Nick Cavallari, CPA, CFE of Baker Tilly LLC, to present the audit for the District 39 and Willmet Community Special Education Agreement, WICCE. Mr. Cavallari attended the meeting virtually to present the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAPR, along with subsequent reports and audit communication letters. The district is proud to report that it received an unmodified clean opinion for 2020. Mr. Boltmeyer also shared a document highlighting the differences in budgets to actual for the operating funds, which included variances due to COVID-19. The fiscal year 2020 budget deficit was projected to be $1.7 million, but as the document showed, we ended up with a budget surplus of $1.9 million. He noted salaries and benefits came in under budget and the bond issuance allowed for additional proceeds. The FY '20 operating fund balance ended at 70%. The fiscal year 2021 budget is projected to have just over 47% in operating funds at the end of the year. And that's my report. I'll turn it back over to you, President Fabes.
Thank you so much. Now, we're turning it over to the Strategy Committee, Mr. Steen.
All right, and the Strategy Committee, which is currently the COVID-19 Committee. So during the Committee of the Whole meeting last week, Katie Lee and Kelly Jackson shared an update to the Enhanced Remote Learning Program Review, and board watchers will recall, we went over that report last month. They reported that on Monday, November 2nd, committee members comprised of staff and administrators met to review and identify trends in the survey data, which were summarized, as I mentioned, in the October board meeting. The committee formed recommendations and began brainstorming action items. The committee, excuse me, although all suggestions and ideas will be thoroughly discussed as the review continues, Ms. Lee and Mrs. Jackson shared a few action items under each recommendation the administration felt could be implemented and should be implemented immediately. Some example action items in this category were prioritizing synchronous learning time for more small group instruction, balancing online and offline time, increasing opportunities for social interaction across all grades, and providing a centralized location for information specific to enhanced remote learning and families of the remote learners. They also conducted an in-person, excuse me, they also conducted an in-person learning program review, and later tonight, they will be sharing summaries of the data collected in a similar way as they did for the remote learning review. Dr. Kremiscoli reported administration is working to consider the second semester enrollment process. Communication will be sent to families tomorrow regarding enrollment selections for the second semester. The district is committed to honoring all enrollment commitment selections received by November 30th for either in-person or fully remote program. Dr. Kremiscoli emphasized that there is the possibility of changes in teacher assignments if a child moves from one program to another. The goal is continuity for the students and the staff, but there may be a need to reassign teachers if there are significant changes to enrollments. As an example, the Remote Parent Survey results indicated that the families of approximately 35 students within the remote program would be unlikely to remain in that program for the second semester, while the families of about 20 students indicated that they would be unlikely to remain in the in-person program. So as you can see, we're expecting that we're going to get some switching, and the switching may not be equal going both directions, and that's, that is the root cause of any staffing or continuity changes that we have to make. Dr. Kremiscoli also said the administration is finalizing communications and plans, and an update will be provided later on this evening's agenda. Also during the November 9th Committee of the Whole meeting, Dr. Kremiscoli reported on the metric advisory, metrics advisory team meetings, which have become more critical than ever as data begins to fall more in the range of substantial. Now, just as I did last month, I will remind everybody that what I'm about to talk about is a meeting that I'm, I'm reviewing what we talked about in the Committee of Whole meeting a week ago, and so I'm reviewing what happened in the Friday meeting before that. Later tonight, we will also review what happened in the metrics advisory meeting this past Friday, three days ago. Right now, I'm talking about 10 days ago. So there are diverging opinions regarding whether schools should remain open in light of the regional community spread metrics. The team finds itself in a very tenuous position of needing to weigh the alarming community spread metrics of regional positivity rates, as well as the growing new cases per 100,000 in the region, and more locally in Willmet and the township. On November 9th, there was more moderate community spread metrics with lower positivity rates in Willmet and the township, as well as relatively low cases within the schools. However, positivity and new cases have continued to rise daily. The district has had good success in this continuous through today in implementing mitigation procedures within schools, and we have seen no evidence of within-school transmission, nor until at least very recently, an uptick in cases within the schools. Nonetheless, the increasing risk of the community spread, as well as the challenges with staff and staffing in light of quarantine restrictions are increasingly challenging. And I just want to point out that one of the challenges here is that we are asking staff that when they are feeling sick, when they have those, you know, when they have symptoms, to please stay home. That is something we do every year, but it's even more stringent this year, and of course, that leads to staffing challenges to keep in-person education going. So in light of the November 9th metrics meeting, we are taking some additional immediate actions or have begun to take them to address the growing concerns, including having preemptive sub, excuse me, preemptive substitutes at each building, an ongoing review of the testing options and a closer review, excuse me, that should be the COVID testing options, so testing for the disease, and a closer review of internal operations to continue to evaluate the safety of keeping schools open for in-person instruction. The administration remains committed to prepare for a pivot to remote instruction if needed. A decision will be made by Friday, November 20th for the week of November 30th, and an update on Friday's meeting will be provided, this past Friday's meeting will be provided later in tonight's agenda. And that is my very long strategy report update.
Thank you very much. Now, we will move to the Liaison Reports. Mr. Steen, you're still on the hot seat with the Community Review Committee.
Community Review Committee, which is actually more of this Strategy Committee this year, for the time being, anyway, met last Tuesday and ably led by Nathan Harada. We welcome the CEC, so sorry, I have to do my alphabet suit again. CRC is our Community Review Committee. CEC is the consultants who we, whom we've hired to help us with our strategy reviews. So last Tuesday, we saw CEC come and meet with the CRC for the first time, and the representative from the CEC did a wonderful job of taking us through the, the way that they envisioned the strategy review going, the kinds of elements that are in the process, collecting a lot of information from the community, from stakeholders across the board, and how they then take and put this together into a recommendation. They shared things like the ultimate end product that we're looking for. They shared things like the ultimate end product that we're looking for and some examples of that. It's a very clear, one-page, two-side document that talks about goals, talks about why we're doing what we're doing, how we get there, et cetera, but it's a, it's a very concrete and clear end product that I think people will be pleased with. So the CEC members asked, excuse me, nope, I blew it. The CRC members asked CEC about a number of questions about how it would take place, who's included, how people are included, how the CRC would be included, et cetera, and got, I think, very good answers to those. So it was a helpful and productive meeting. For those looking for more about the strategy review, the, most of the work for the strategy review is going to be starting in the new year 2021. There's not going to be a lot going on before then, so that's my, my CRC update.
Thank you very much. Ed Foundation, actually, I don't know who went this month. Did someone go?
Pretty confident that I was there, but I don't have notes to record out on the Educational Foundation meeting, except that I know that they continue to work on the GRIP grants and, and on, on awarding those. Tony shared last, last month that we are excited to have a grant awarded to support our ebook efforts, and so that is very, very much appreciated, and we continue to appreciate the support of our Educational Foundation despite this unusual year and their limited fundraising opportunities in person. They continue to seek creative ways to raise funds and to support the district, so we really appreciate that.
And apologies to the Foundation for not having a board member there this month. We will make sure to have one next month and moving forward. Okay, so we will now move on to the Illinois Association of School Boards. Ms. Sternweiler, no small feat this month.
No, it was not. Well, this past Saturday, I had the honor of representing our board as the voting member of the Delegate Assembly of the ISB, at the ISB Delegate Assembly, and we voted on the new resolutions. There were eight new resolutions and three reaffirmations of existing positions and one new belief statement. I'll just run through, several of the new resolutions were stricken down because they were not appealed by the districts who proposed them. So the loan program, the school report card, I'm going to skip over one, and then the, the last one, the local control pandemic one, they were all not even taken for a vote. And so then, the one that was actually most disappointing was we fought really hard, and I spoke several times to oppose the ISB's resolution to, they, they wanted us to support the resolution for, they wanted us to, now it gets really confusing, sorry. It's like opposing to oppose. So we were opposing their opposition to gun storage and in Illinois, gun storage laws, and we lost sadly. It was 108 votes to 146 votes. So I was really sad about that, but we tried. We'll try again. I'm sure it will come up again next year. It always does. Then, while there was a, the one that we discussed at length was for, was the one that was proposed by the Avoca School District for pre-certification, not pre-K, pre-certification licensure, while the, in its original language, it did fail. It actually passed overwhelmingly, 84% in its rewritten language, so it kind of was a, it keeps us almost where we are, but it was a little bit of a win for them. So they're going to bring it back again next year, and hopefully we'll push through more education certification at the higher levels of education for English language literacy. And then the, let's see, teacher shortage resolution was opposed, 234 votes to 22 votes, which was what we had agreed upon as well, so that was in our favor. And we were also on the sides of, of the same voting sides of all the other things that we decided. They lumped together, just so you know, e-learning on Election Day, which passed 234 votes to 22 votes, but they lumped that together with all three reaffirmations of existing positions and the new belief statement for equity. So I assumed that it was okay to vote yes on those, and I figured that I would have your support on that. So basically, that's the recap of what it, what happened in that meeting, and it was an interesting session. Next year, hopefully, we'll have our own, we might have our own statement, but that is the 2020 Resolutions Committee.
Thank you for representing us so ably, Ellen. I appreciate it.
Oh, one more thing, in November 20th, just next, this coming Friday, is the ISB Virtual Summit, for those of you that want to attend. It's always interesting, so I highly recommend it.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Polling with the Willmet Community Special Education Agreement.
Yes, so Wixie, we actually had our first advisory committee meeting today with representatives from both members, District 39 and Avoca District 37. We discussed the annual financial report, which was completed by Baker Tilly, and indicated that all is in order, and the committee approved the fiscal year-to-date activity and discussed the current plans for the summer enrichment program and extended school year, which will occur in the summer of 2021, and we will meet again on March 22nd.
Terrific, thank you. Legislative update, Ms. Stone.
Yes, this is going to be brief once again. There is nothing new to report at this time.
That was brief. Moving on to informational items, we'll start with written communication. Dr. Kremis Goli.
Thank you, President Paves. I, in fact, have a lot to report to the board this evening. The board will see in its packet of information the written communications that have been received by the board. The board has received several written communications from Ruchah Patel, appreciative that students are able to remain in in-person learning, other communications supporting in-person learning, and for schools to remain open during the holiday months. We're from Kathleen Sullivan, excuse me, Rachel Hilleghman, Katie McCullough, Krista Robinson, Stacy Worley, and Chris Worley. Abby and Steve Karasik wrote to express strong interest in having District 39 implement a COVID surveillance testing program. Walter Keats of the Willmet Park Friends wrote to suggest proposed enhancements to the community playfields and east, and the east-west bike path. And Rachel Hilleghman emailed to suggest adjustments to the discussion of some members of the Metrics Committee. I know the board has received a few additional communications since this report was made. Are there any that anyone would like to report? Otherwise, they will be reported next month on next month's communication.
Board members? Okay, then should we move on to administrative announcements?
Thank you. First of all, School Board Members' Day, Friday, November 15th, I wanted to announce this event as board members get so very little credit for the countless hours of work that you perform on behalf of our community, our staff, our students, especially in this year where we are all working tirelessly to support the needs of everyone. Thank you for all that you do, for the difficult decisions that you help to guide, and the vision that you provide to our school district. We sincerely appreciate it, and we recognize that your job is not an easy one right now, and there are many, many different perspectives that you're weighing as you make these difficult decisions, so thank you for your leadership. You said you didn't see it, but there was a big standing ovation here, but not so big because we're limited by participants, but everyone that was here was very generous in their appreciation as well. Thank you, members of the board.
Okay, should we just go down the line?
Most certainly. Parent-teacher conferences were hosted. We were really excited to be able to connect with so many parents. I know our staff worked incredibly hard to make those really meaningful connections with our parents despite being remote this year. I think in some ways, that was actually a really nice way to connect with our families and offered some convenience to, to our parents to be able to get from one session to the next if, if that was a need of family members, so we really appreciate it. I know that our teachers and staff put in countless hours to prepare and ensure that that's the most meaningful connection possible between parents and teachers, and so we appreciate that. It was another successful couple of days, so thank you. I will, next, if I have everyone's approval, move on to the Metrics Team and reopening update. We do have a lot to share this evening, and I'm eager for the board's feedback on our next steps at this point. As Mark shared, we are continuing to meet as a Metrics Team. Our Metrics Team discussions continue to focus on metrics, both external and internal, and on adjustments that we can make to our programming. The discussions of late have been much more challenging than early on, particularly because we do continue to see significant and worrisome community spread of COVID-19, while at the same time, we have seen really tremendous success thanks to the hard work of our teachers and our staff and our administrators within our buildings. And so we recognize the importance of health and safety. We also recognize the critical value that our community as a whole, our staff, our students, all place on in-person opportunities for those who have chosen that. In balancing, all of this has become really, really difficult, so I'll provide the board with an update. Our Metrics Team discussion focused in two primary areas on Friday. One was following up on the action steps that were agreed upon at last week's team meeting. Those included, as Mark shared, preemptive substitute staffing. We've started to plan for those and called, we have some staff already on board who are subbing for us on a daily basis in each of our schools. We've already planned for that. We've also built up our substitute pool throughout the school year, thanks to the hard work of Dr. Glouacki and so many of our administrators who have been interviewing quite a bit, and to our parents who have taken the opportunity to step up and serve in this capacity as well. The effort here really is to preemptively call for those subs to be available in many more numbers at each of our schools so that we can sub for what we anticipate to be some absences as a result of quarantine or illness or whatever other reasons that might exist. So thank you to everyone for supporting that, to the board for really supporting that endeavor. Second, we took a close look at operational issues, and we have a team of teachers, parents, and administrators designing a new strategy for monitoring our operational efforts within our schools. We look forward to hearing more about that. I know that they did some significant work over the weekend, and we'll continue to work on that so that we can continue to review our operational efforts, which so far have been going really, really well. And then finally, we have a team looking at testing options for COVID-19. You'll see later on this evening's agenda, a recommendation to expand PCR testing access. We've had some good experience with Ambry that has been providing some testing access to our staff, and we want to expand that to household members of staff as well as to our students, and so you'll see later on this evening's agenda, a recommendation in that regard. We're really excited about that. I'll hold on talking about that because that does come up a little later in the agenda. So then, we did turn our attention to looking at the metrics, and as the board is aware, we look at external metrics and internal metrics. I will take a minute, if I can, to share my screen so that we can all look together, if I can get this up. Oh, good, you can see it. Okay, so there we go. So this is our metrics dashboard, and as everyone can see, there's a top part that is very, very substantial at this point. It has been moving over in that direction for the last couple of weeks. Last week, as Mark shared, our positivity and new cases within the region and with locally, we're starting to be really significant, and we see that continue this week. We've also seen this week increases on a daily basis for positivity and for new cases more locally in Willmet and in the township. We did add a feature onto our dashboard to let us know about how long those metrics have been in the red zone, and so what you can see really above that bar is the external metrics that are really indicating some pretty significant risk of COVID-19 spread. What you see below the bar are the internal operation metrics, and you'll see really a pretty significant difference there between what's happening in our community and what's happening within our schools at this point, and this makes for a really difficult decision for us as we look forward to the upcoming weeks. So as we look at our internal operations, I do want to point out just a few things. These metrics focus on how well we are implementing our mitigation procedures and their impact within our schools, but they also focus on staffing, on student attendance, on COVID-19 cases and quarantines within our schools. As Mark shared, and as we've discussed now a couple of times with the board, the district has experienced relatively low case numbers within our schools and has not seen an increase in weekly cases identified. I will add the caveat that over the last couple of days, we have seen an uptick in students who have been exposed primarily outside of school, but in identification of cases nonetheless. Throughout our district, we've continued to have good success with implementing those mitigation procedures and really have not seen evidence of within-school transmission of the virus quite frequently when we do contact tracing. Not only are we looking for connections and potential exposure within our schools to those close contacts, but we're also backward mapping to see if we can identify where that individual might have been exposed. That helps us to understand what's happening with the virus and where there may be some risks. We've successfully identified and isolated cases that originated outside of our schools, moved close contacts to quarantine, and had them return to school successfully. Last week was actually the first time in our metrics report that we reported no new classroom quarantines for the week, so that was really good news for us. Then, of course, as things moved over the weekend, we did have another classroom and a half need to quarantine based on an identified case, but again, the success that we continue to experience in identifying very quickly a case, isolating that and quarantining those who might be close contacts have led us to have really pretty good success there. We continue to partner closely with the Cook County Department of Public Health. They're really helpful and responsive to us when we can do that internal contact tracing and consult with them. They continue to have some challenges in doing contact tracing outside of our schools for myriad reasons, and, and, but internally, we continue to have really good success. So while case numbers within our schools have remained relatively stable, the number of quarantines due to possible school, close contacts have also declined, the number of students and staff on quarantine due to exposure outside of our schools has risen, and you can see that down here near the bottom, as has the number of unfilled staff absences. We had a little bit of a downtick last week, and then we saw it climb right back up again, and again, I think that is attributable to the fact that we do need to quarantine, we need to take these symptoms seriously when we experience them, and it is growing more and more difficult to fill those, those absences when they come up. While we've been able to operate our schools safely, our ability to continue to do so in light of the alarming community spread and increasing issues associated with quarantine is, quite frankly, a challenge. So both of these metrics are really, really important as we're considering our next steps. Further complicating the matter, we are unfortunately not being given really clear guidance from the governor's office or from the Cook County Department of Public Health regarding school closures, regarding stay-at-home orders or advisories, and what that really means for our staff and for our students regarding travel restrictions. The Cook County Department of Public Health just updated them again, and there isn't a lot of clarity to really guide our next steps there, and then the related quarantine orders as well. And then the related quarantine orders as well. We, as I mentioned, we recognize that the Cook County Department of Public Health continues to struggle with completing contact tracing outside of our schools, even though we have really good success within our schools. Therefore, at this point, I am recommending an adaptive pause to in-person instruction for the week following Thanksgiving break. In light of the community spread of COVID-19, in light of the ongoing quarantines that we're experiencing for our staff and for our students, we think it is in our best interest to preemptively plan for this, to be proactive in that. That will give us that two weeks' time, hopefully, where people are following all of the orders of the governor, not traveling, because again, we've heard very clearly that nonessential travel should not be occurring. But in light of the community spread and the operational challenges that we're experiencing at this point, we think that is within our best interest and within the best interest of our students to take a pause. And we hope very much that we will be able to return the very following week to in-person instruction. As I shared, external metrics are high and rising, and that really does lead us to anticipate increased challenges to our internal operations and staffing. Over this next week, we will be actively monitoring the situation and evaluating plans and opportunities for the two weeks that follow. We continue to pursue testing. You'll hear a little bit about that in just a minute, as well as opportunities for that instruction in person for the second and third weeks after Thanksgiving. We do expect to learn more from our governor and from the Cook County Department of Public Health early this week. We have yet to hear that. Many of us were anticipating an announcement today that did not come. And so again, we continue to monitor the situation and plan for the upcoming weeks. I will share that our district, the Board of Education, has made a very firm commitment to following the science, to carefully monitoring the metrics, and to maintaining health and safety as a top priority of our entire district, while also remaining committed to offering in-person instruction as much as we can, as long as we can do so safely. We acknowledge that schools remain one of the safest places for our students to be. And yet, we recognize that there are external pressures on our operations that are putting that in jeopardy. We have seen increased quarantines, increased staff burdens, greater risk to cases entering our buildings, and just increased uncertainty at this point. We also recognize, as I mentioned before, that we need additional clarity and guidance from our local health departments. From my perspective, we must ensure that health and safety remains a top priority. And to safely and effectively operate our schools, taking a pause for that week following Thanksgiving break makes the most sense to us at this point. So I know that at this point, this is really disappointing news for some. It may be celebratory news for others, in so much as it provides us with some certainty for what to expect the week following Thanksgiving, and yet isn't a firm closure for an indefinite amount of time. I think that's really important for everyone to recognize. We're taking a pause for a week, and we'll continue to reassess based on the metrics, based on our staffing, based on the quarantines we are experiencing. We have every hope that we will see a stabilization of the metrics in the near future in that we will be able to continue after that one week of an adaptive pause. With that, I think I will pause to ask for feedback from the board. I am looking for your support for this decision that has been made at this point. I think that by the end of this week, we will have some additional information. And I would advise that the board may need to hold a special meeting at some point in the future, both to look at testing and to look at some future adjustments that we could make in order to continue to operate our schools safely.
Thank you, Dr. Krimis Goli. Before I open it up for discussion, I'm just gonna say a couple of words. First of all, I just want to thank the board and the administration and the staff and the metrics committee. This is an incredible amount of work to track and clearly and transparently articulate the metrics each week. I think that you correctly reflected our priorities and where we stand. I want to say that I wholeheartedly support the one-week adaptive pause. And I want to challenge the administration to spend this week seeing what options exist to maximize our ability to reopen two weeks after that. I think that our contact tracing clearly demonstrates community spread is occurring due to activities outside the school doors. And we all need to be vigilant and follow directions to minimize exposure and mitigate risk. It takes all of us to get the numbers down. I encourage you, if you're planning on leaving town, rethink it. If you're planning on having a large Thanksgiving dinner with folks outside your bubble, rethink it. In order to keep schools open, we have a collective duty to do what we can to minimize the risk, not only for the school community, but our community at large. We need to plan on reopening on December 7th, assuming that the metric stabilizes, the metric stabilize, and we can staff schools appropriately. If we all hunker down those two weeks, those metrics should be able to stabilize and even come down. Again, I just want to say I support the one-week pause and creating and implementing a plan to come back. I would also support additional testing if we can figure out how to do it in a reliable way. But I want to caution us that that is not the panacea, right? It is one tool in our toolbox to mitigate risk. So I just took the board president prerogative to talk first, but I also really want to hear what everybody has to say. Ellen?
I likely can't say it a whole lot better than you did, Lisa, but I think it's necessary to reiterate. And probably we can't say it enough again and again. Carrie, I completely support your decision. I think it's well thought out. I know how hard you and the committee have worked, and I know how hard this decision was for you. And I just want to say how committed I am as well to returning to in-person as soon as possible when it is safe for our students and for our teachers. And I would be the first person to say, let's pause, if I didn't feel that it was safe. Because you've made this decision, the one word that I would be very cautionary about is the word celebratory. I don't view this as celebratory at all. In fact, what I want everyone to recognize, and when I say community, our community encompasses every single person, teacher, staff member, administrator, everybody, every person who steps foot in any building in District 39 ever, or has any part of interacting with any student or teacher that's a part of District 39, is a part of our community. It's a greater community. So when I speak about this, it's to every single one of you. And we're, you know, Thanksgiving is upon us. And when you look at Thanksgiving celebrations, there has been a very clear warning about it. I promise you that my family is not celebrating Thanksgiving this year the way we have in the past. There are five of us, and we are going to be at home, and we're going to have our celebration. And we're going to be zooming with my 85-year-old parents. And we don't get to travel, and I haven't traveled since February. And I haven't vacationed since February. So I would put it to all of you as a challenge, or whatever you want to call it, to, like Lisa said, now's the time. You know, this is the challenge. It's time to hunker down and take responsibility. Because if you want our schools to be open, this is what it's going to take. It's going to take real, serious commitment on every single person's part. And I, like Lisa, view this as a pause. But I truly, truly want to see the schools open again after this one-week pause. And I really, this is a pause. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Someone else? Anyone else? Mr. Panzika, all you.
First off, I want to appreciate the work that's been done by everyone, the administration in particular, to get to this point. I think the proposal that you presented of a finite pause is appropriate, and I'll get into that for a second. And but I want to reiterate that, in my view, it's a finite pause. Then we continue with our procedures, which say we look 10 days ahead every week. And the fact that we were closed for one week doesn't mean that the next week is in back to our baseline. And our baseline is open schools. When we look at the data, there's, as you saw on the chart, there's kind of a lot of red things at the top, and there's a lot of green things at the bottom. And what that means is that the procedures that we've been doing in our schools have been working. Nothing's perfect, but they've shown that when we follow the procedures, that the schools, as we've said before, are the safest place you can be. That doesn't mean that if everything else is bad, that a school can be the only place that's safe. And I think if next week, or the week after, week after, I guess, if Thanksgiving week, I'll just say it that way, was a normal week, I would be looking at these numbers and saying, they're basically the numbers that we were looking at before, and we should stay open. But Thanksgiving isn't a normal week. And I don't want to force us into a position where we say, well, we'll pretend like it is a normal week, and everybody's going to do stuff the same way that they normally would do, and then have the week after that with lots of, not spread in school, but lots of cases, and then put us in a position that we have to recover and do things that are suboptimal. So if Thanksgiving was a normal week, I would be saying the numbers are about what we've been looking at before. And, you know, the feedback that I would have given in the committee would have been, we should stay open. We've been doing a good job in our schools. But it's not a normal week. So we'll take the pause, we'll continue our meetings. And in my mind, the default would be, we'll come back right after the pause. Circumstances may say that's not possible. That's why we have the committee meetings. But I agree with the prospect that says Thanksgiving is not a normal week, and we shouldn't force ourselves into pretending like it is. So thank you for your decision.
Thank you, Mr. Panzika. Ms. Pauling?
I don't have a lot more to add that others haven't, but I find this to be nuanced and appropriate. And I look at it in the whole, in terms of the metrics, as well as our staffing concerns. Really hopeful with what we can pursue with testing. I feel like, especially upon reentry, not for this vacation necessarily, but hopefully in the future, that may provide a measure of information and data for us. But I am so grateful for the work that has been done to allow our kids to be in school so long and so safely. And I think this is really appropriate.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Stone?
Yes, I think the approach is very measured. And when you factor in that November 30th is already going to be a remote learning planning day, we're talking about four days that would have been fully in-person K-4 or pre-K-4 or hybrid for the 5-8 to go to remote. And we know that there are other communities making the decision to cancel four weeks. So in light of our measured, finite approach at this point in time, I support it. And I'm encouraged by our recent decision to preemptively pursue hiring subs and to explore testing options, that that indicates our commitment to the value of in-person learning as much as can be done safely.
Thank you. Mr. Steen?
Yeah, I don't want to be left out.
Or should you be?
This is, look, it's a really, it's a really difficult decision. People who have listened to the metrics meetings know that I've recognized and believe in the value of in-person education. I'm very proud of the way that we've been able to open and be open and provide that in-person and do it safely, which we demonstrably have. I think that's wonderful. I do support this decision, but I will point out that I just support even more the decision that the administration made back in July and June, when you said, what we need to do is to be able to be flexible and turn on a dime depending on the facts on the ground. And what I hear in this decision is a recognition that we have facts on the ground, which is a combination of external metrics, of operational metrics, of the potential for maybe some testing, and of a specific situation with the holidays. I'm very happy that one of the metrics that we're not worried about is internal transmission. I think that's great. We're still on the right side of that. But we are looking at these metrics, and we are saying, we have designed this to turn on a dime. It is time to do that. But we are also saying, as things change, we want to be ready to turn on a dime and go back the other direction. I think that is why one week is the right decision, and we will see what happens next. The one thing that I've learned more than anything else is that I have no idea what's going to happen with the metrics and with the situation 15 days from now. So totally in support, and thank you very much for all the hard work.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Caesaretti?
Oh, sorry. Even though you said everything, there needs to be other things. I imagine this is really a tough decision to make, Carrie, so. And I have some inkling of all the factors that have gone into this. So I support it. I think it's too bad, you know, I'd love to see the kids in. But it's been quite an achievement as far as we have, and I'm convinced that we will be back as soon as we possibly can be back.
Thank you. I will affirm that this is one of the most difficult decisions we've needed to make, and largely because we do believe so much in what our staff are doing and the benefits we see for our students. And yet, we recognize that we need to come together on behalf of health and safety and to balance that with the need to make a decision that allows us to pivot. I do think that we're set up really well to pivot effectively. And so I don't feel like we need to make a month-long decision or a two-month-long decision. I think that would be hopeful, that would mean that we somehow have a crystal ball, and it's so hard to predict where we will be in one week or two weeks with our metrics. And so we appreciate that a month-long decision would be helpful for some. It would provide some certainty, but it also would limit the opportunities that we have to meet our students where they're at and to continue to move forward with the good work that we've been doing in our schools. So we want to prioritize health and safety. We want to prioritize each of the learning programs that we have made available to our families this year. And I believe that this decision really helps us to do that. I call upon everyone to really be cautious over the next three weeks, as the governor has advised us, to really think carefully about the gatherings and activities that we're engaged in. We have the opportunity to turn the curve on these metrics. I started to share some of the metrics that show below, and everyone can go online. If you're like me, you probably look at those 12 times a day. We know they only change once a day, but we update them more regularly than we even committed to on our website because it really is important and because they do change every day. And it is really difficult to predict what 10 days out might look like. So this decision helps us to So this decision helps us to plan and to have some certainty for our families and for our staff as we move into the next two or three weeks, really two and a half weeks at this point. And then it, it allows us to continue to be agile enough to make the decision that is right in the next seven days. So thank you to everyone for your support of this decision. And I also want to thank our staff for their support of this decision. I want to thank our families for being willing to be flexible enough that we can be adaptive and we can pivot with, and know still that we can maintain the rigor and instructional effectiveness that is, is really necessary and, and, and we've come to be very proud of in this district. So thank you to everyone.
So I just want to have a, a word in here before we, we turn. I just want to say how proud I am of the community and everyone involved. The decisions are hard, and I really saw as we struggled with this over the course of this week on what to do, civil discourse, fact-based conversations, and all of us wanting at the core to do the right thing. And the other piece is, I know there's a lot we don't know, but I just want to remind people, there are some certain truths that we do know. We are in control of how the virus spreads, wearing a mask, limiting your exposure, washing your hands. Like, I know we are all so tired, right? COVID fatigue, that's a real thing. But we can't stop now because it's worse than it was in terms of the spread at the beginning. And, and we know it's, it's tiring, but it's not super hard. So again, I urge everyone over these next two weeks, do what you need to do, and let's get this curve down. We've done it before. We can do it again. All right, I'm turning it over. We're now talking about testing.
Yes, thank you. As I mentioned, the metrics committee was excited to have a subcommittee really dig into some testing options. As I shared, we have continued to explore those testing options that we can make available, both to staff and to students. Thus far, we have had really good experience with a PCR testing option that we've made available to our staff. We have had that available now for about a month. This option is accessible to staff who are symptomatic or have had some exposure to a COVID-positive individual. They can test and get results relatively quickly. It has helped to shorten quarantines when we're symptomatic. Certainly, if you've been exposed, you still need to quarantine for the full time, but it, it offers some peace of mind and gives everyone that access that they need. And so you'll see later on this evening's agenda that we have negotiated a contract with Ambry Testing to expand access to this testing to household members of staff as well as to our students. Expanding it to household members of staff, we've seen time and again that when we're living in a household, if someone is undergoing evaluation for COVID-19, the whole household must quarantine. And so as much as we can shorten that timeframe, the better we're able to resume our, our normal activities. And so making this available not only to staff but to their household members will be helpful to us in staffing. What we hear from our school nurses is that many times our students are struggling to access the kind of PCR testing that they need in order to resume in-person schooling. When they're symptomatic and they're being evaluated by a doctor, there are many reasons why a doctor might be immediately, might not be immediately available. We've had some conversations about rapid testing, and at this point, in light of the community spread and positivity rates, rapid testing is not recommended to evaluate symptoms. The gold standard really is PCR testing. And so at this point, we have on the agenda that contract that will allow us to expand access to the testing services. We also have the fee that would be assessed to families if they choose to access this. Again, all of this is optional. It is just another testing opportunity if families or staff want to pursue that. For our families, they would be charged a $20 fee. The district is charged a $10 fee by the testing service, plus costs of shipping and handling and some time for administrative processing. So again, that we're trying to make this as break even as possible and really offer it as a convenience to our families and also recognize that having this testing available will allow us to continue to have certainty in what we're doing within our schools. And so we're really excited to offer this. This will be tracked through our schools and through our school nurses for those who want to access that option. The staff access will continue to be tracked and supported through our human resources department. So we're really excited about that. Secondly, we are continuing to explore a variety of options for screening or surveillance testing. That would be the rapid testing, something similar to what Nutri-R is doing with their saliva-based testing. This testing would be designed to help us to identify asymptomatic or presymptomatic individuals during periods when community spread metrics are high. We don't envision this being a forever endeavor, but something when our, when our metrics are really high and we're experiencing substantial risks, we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to limit asymptomatic or presymptomatic individuals from entering our buildings. Thus far, we have explored a variety of options, and I'll tell you, there are many, many options out there, but not all are accessible. Not all would meet our requirements for cost and for turnaround time. And if we can't meet those, the program really isn't as effective as it could be. And so we continue to explore options. I have several meetings set up this week. And if by the end of the week, we have a program that seems like it might be viable, again, it may be worthwhile for the board to schedule a special meeting at some point in the near future if we can get a contract negotiated to make that testing available. This would be testing that would be available to students and to staff as an option, again, as a surveillance or a screening kind of a tool to help protect and, and maintain the health and safety within our buildings. Ideally, we'd be looking at offering this the first week of January. There's a possibility we could do it sooner, but it really just depends on if we're able to find the right solution and get that set up quickly enough. We have been closely monitoring what Nutri-R is doing. They seem to be having some good success with their program. And so we're partnering with them as well as we continue to evaluate that as a potential option. Any questions about any of that?
Just wanted to say thank you again for all this work. I think it's really fantastic, and it puts us on the right track, or keeps us on the right track, I should say. We're, we've been on the right track. So thank you. It's really, I support it very much.
I never thought I would talk as much about nasal swabs and saliva as I do right now. But it is all for, for good cause. So hopefully, we'll be able to identify a really good solution for our needs that's cost-effective as well. And I look forward to bringing that forward to the board as soon as we're able to narrow that field.
And we are, obviously, it should go without saying, but more than happy to call a special board meeting to approve a testing contract or anything else you need right now.
Thank you. All right, can I move on to second semester enrollment commitments? Okay, so it feels a little strange to be talking about second semester enrollment commitments right now because it feels like January is a very far way away. And we recognize that we're making decisions somewhat on a week-by-week basis at this point in light of the ever-changing environment around us. And yet, we want to remain committed to that trust that we asked for at the beginning of the school year, which allowed for families to make a commitment for a semester and to have the opportunity to change that commitment for second semester. In order to honor that, that opportunity, we must begin to collect those enrollment commitments now so that we can plan accordingly and make sure that that transition is as smooth as possible. So as we discussed at the last Monday's committee of the whole meeting of the board, we've been very busy planning for second semester already. I'll briefly review these plans, and Katie Lee has put together some additional pages on our parent toolbox. I'd like her to share those with you in just a minute so that you can see what is available to our families to help inform this decision. As I shared last week, we plan to communicate to parents tomorrow regarding our enrollment commitments for second semester. Those we ask be submitted by November 30th. Again, we are committed to honoring any of those enrollment commitments that are received by November 30th will be honored whether you're switching programs or maintaining your current program. We will be asking parents to submit that. There's a couple of things I want to note. As we look at second semester, for each student, parents may choose to maintain their enrollment commitment from first semester or to transition to the other program. We do expect some changes to occur. In doing so, families should understand, first and foremost, if, first and foremost, that every student's request will be honored, provided we receive it by November 30th. Secondly, remote students returning to in-person programming will return to their home school. That is a priority that we've set. I will acknowledge that homeschool assignment is, is our priority. It cannot be guaranteed until we receive all of those enrollment commitments, but we feel very confident about that. Regarding class assignment, if a student is moving from one program to the other, it is nearly certain that their class assignment and teacher assignment or teacher teams will change. Those teachers are either in-person teachers or they're remote teachers. Not very often are they both at the same time. However, maintaining your current program does not guarantee that you keep the same classroom or the same teacher. There will be some shifts that are made, and it will depend on how many enrollment changes are, are made. So if, for example, there's a large group of, of families who choose to transition into the remote-only program, we may need to open another section. If there's a large transition in the other direction, we would need to open another section, and that may cause for some shifting of class assignments. We ask everyone to remain aware that at the beginning of the semester, we said we, we will maintain these, these connections for first semester, and we may need to make some adjustments for second semester so that everyone has that same opportunity again to re-enroll for second semester. Our goal is to minimize change as much as possible. However, we, we do want to be really transparent that there may be some changes that need to occur, regardless of whether you switch or remain in the same program. Class assignments and reassignments will be based on enrollment numbers. Again, individual class or teacher requests cannot be honored. We have many, many moving parts, and so we're going to do our best to minimize change as much as possible. But we ask that people not be making requests to be with their friends as we, as we move into second semester. Again, we're hoping not to make too many changes. Every effort will be made to, made to balance class sizes and to minimize disruptions for our students. Enrollment selection and school location will be confirmed and communicated to families on December 16th. Class and teacher assignments and schedules will be distributed to families no later than January 15th. So again, we have a lot of work to do, and the sooner we can get those enrollment commitments in, the sooner we'll be able to start programming and planning for second semester. We are eager to hear from our parents about their plans for second semester. So we'll communicate out tomorrow. We will host a parent Q and A webinar this Friday at 10:30 a.m. Parents will be able to register for that. And the enrollment commitment link looks very similar to last, last time as well. So I'll quick-share my screen, and I know Katie then will get ready to share hers as well. Unless it's not going to let me. Oh, there it is. So again, parents will have the second semester enrollment commitment form. They'll place their address, the student's first and last name, the ID, the school. That would be their, their home school by residence, the grade, and then which program they're committing to. We do ask for parents to identify if they're maintaining or if they're moving programs that will just help us to sort as efficiently as possible, identifying services, and then a signature. It should be quick and easy. The most difficult part really will be for those who are kind of on the fence, making a decision about what commitment they want to make. Again, these commitments are for the entire semester. With that, I'll ask Katie to share her screen because she's been working really hard to make sure that we are continuing to improve what's on our website and the information that's available to our families. Katie?
This is the family toolkit that we refer to quite often as a source of information for families to find everything that they need to for this school year. So what we've done with, based on feedback, updated the front page, the homepage, so that you can see that we have our reopening guide, our frequently asked questions. This here, the support for District 39 families, links to the parent bootcamp videos and other information like our parent events. But what they will also find if you go to the site is that we've kind of enlarged and made sure that the programs are really highlighted. So each of these are links that will provide information about each of the models that we are offering. So in the navigation, there is a second semester enrollment commitment link. And if you go there, what the administrators were able to do is provide the enhanced remote learning and in-person learning comparison charts. There's one for elementary and there's one for 5'8". And so we hope that this will provide some information that will help our families make a decision as well. And then, as you can see below, this is the same Google form that Dr. Kremis Goli just shared, and that is linked here as well. So if I go back to the homepage, I just, again, wanted to show you if you scroll down, you can see what the enhanced remote learning program is. If you click on that, it will take you to more information, including that same comparison chart that I mentioned before, the sample schedules, the 5'8" comparison chart, the schedules, as well as some other information that is helpful for our families. So again, from the front page of our, or homepage of our district website, you can find the link there that will take you directly to this Google site.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions from board members?
I'm going to just jump in for a second and just reiterate a couple really important things for the community. The first is, I heard the deadline was November 30th. And, and if you don't get your form in by November 30th, it, you, we may not be able to accommodate the choice that you make. So we just need to tell our friends far and wide, be on the lookout tomorrow for that email and get your request in. I've heard lots of, or read lots of emails and chatter about, can we do mini remotes based on any number of things, whether it's the holidays or quarantine? And the truth is, I just want to put this out there that we don't have the luxury of staffing to offer mid-semester changes for a little bit or a lot of it. And so the choice is the choice. It's for the duration of the school year. And when parents are thinking about, will things change? Yes, things will change, but it sounds like a vaccine isn't going to be far and wide until the earliest in the spring, if we're lucky. So when you make those choices, I'm not sure that much may change. Positivity rates will change, but there won't be kind of a, a new world order that would affect this choice. Was that all correct, Dr. Kremis Goli? You're looking like maybe it wasn't.
No, I, yes, that was very correct. And as we have seen this semester, we have tried our very best to strengthen those connections, both in the remote environment and in the in-person environment. And it's really important to us to maintain those for the entire second semester, again, minimizing disruptions in between as much as possible. But it, we do see it as a commitment for the entire second semester. So we ask everyone to really think carefully about, about that decision. And we will have the Q and A, so people can come and ask questions if they would like, and they can submit questions in advance if they prefer as well.
But, and making those matches and changes and accommodating preferences is no small feat in light of the staffing challenges and the very real operational accommodations that need to be made to keep everybody safe. Did anybody else have anything on that one? Ms. Pauling, go ahead.
I just want to say, I think communication is more important now than ever. And so I love the work that you're doing on the website and making that information just as distinct and clear and accessible as possible. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Just a couple of other things from me then. May I move on, President Vapes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. As the board is aware, November 30th is a remote learning planning day, so that will be a non-instructional day for our students, and our staff will be engaged in planning, collaborating, and a little bit of professional development as well. The timing for this day could not be better aligned with what we now know to be the, the couple of days that will follow that week. So we really appreciate the board's support of that. Some point later in the year, we will revise the entire calendar to reflect some of these nuances, just as we would when we take an emergency day for snow or weather-related. It's not always snow, for whatever might be the case. So that, that calendar will be revised and approved by the board later, later in the spring. So that, that calendar will be revised and approved by the board later, later in the spring. We do continue to receive Freedom of Information Act requests. Those are not printed, but provided in the board's packet this evening. The district received several FOIA requests. I will review those very quickly. Jeff Axelrod on November 6th requested spreadsheets created after January 1st, 2020 with information about families and children withdrawn from District 39 to either homeschool or attend elsewhere, or changed from remote to in-person and vice versa. Jeff Axelrod also requested on October 29th, a list of staff who resigned for any reason, along with the dates of resignation, resignation letters and other documents explaining the reason for resignation from October 16th to the present. He also requested on October 16th to the present, sorry, from October 16th to the present, any documentation about suspected or confirmed COVID-19 exposure, suspected or confirmed COVID-19 cases for District 39 staff. Jeff Axelrod on October 29th requested a list of staff requesting or receiving leave of absence for any reason, along with dates, correspondence or documents explaining the leave request. And again, on the 29th, Jeff Axelrod requested any documents about suspected or confirmed COVID-19 cases for District 39 students or staff attended.
Okay. Should we move on to strategic plan updates?
Yes, we can. Thank you. We have an in-person learning program review update, just as we provided to the board last month, the targeted review of our remote learning program. This evening, Katie Lee and Kelly Jackson, and I think Kristin Swanson as well, will provide the, a summary of the program review that has been conducted of our programming for first quarter. Kelly Jackson, thank you for being here tonight.
It's actually Katie Lee is going to start us off.
I always do, I always do the intro, I guess. So we just wanted to say that we are presenting on behalf of all the administrators. So as you just heard, we will be sharing the information and the summaries of the in-person program. And similar to the full remote learning, in-person learning was an option for all district students in grades K through 8 this year. And administration has provided ongoing support to teachers, trying to understand their needs, problem solve any concerns and answer any questions that they have. Initially, many questions were understandably about health and safety. And so the district organized webinars and/or Q and A sessions and web sessions with panels of medical experts, as well as another with community leaders who run preschools in person. That was very helpful and we also have that uploaded to our family toolkit. We know that this is ongoing work and so we will continue to strive for excellence there. So a program review begins with a collection of data. And so we administered the in-person learning surveys to teachers, parents and students to gauge the success of the program so far and to identify areas for improvement as the program continues. We received responses, 589 from third and fourth grade students, 1,114 from fifth through eighth grade students, 2,010 from families and parents, 258 staff members, including the certified staff, and 85 paraprofessionals. And so now Kelly Jackson will share highlights from the data collected from students and families, as well as the open-ended summary.
Thanks, Katie. First, as Katie mentioned, we're going to take a look at data from our families and our students. So, sorry, my pages are out of order. These graphs look at the confidence of parents and students in our safety protocols at school. So parents were asked about their confidence specifically and the answers ranged from blue, not confident, to green, very confident. You can see that parents at about a 90.6, 91% rate indicated that they were very confident or reasonably confident in the safety protocols that were put in place in person. Students were asked a slightly different question and it just says, how safe do you feel at school? And again, students at both grade levels indicated that they feel very safe or safe most of the time. Elementary students were about 88% and grades five through eight were at about 84%. The next question is around our self-certification form. So students in person every day have to submit a self-certification form upon entry to the school. And so we asked how manageable that system was. So for parents, it is a, at 88% that said that they feel like that was really not difficult to manage at all. That's in that orange area. And then students also said that it was easy to manage for them as well. We asked a slightly different question for the kids. It was how often have you forgotten your self-certification form? And at the elementary level, we had about 76% say that they've never forgotten their form and at 5-8, about 80%. So that's a pretty, pretty good rate. As you recall from last month's report, we talked a lot about connections to the school. And one of the main benefits that we've cited over and over, and we've heard from families over and over, is the opportunity to foster those face-to-face connections between parents or between teachers and students and students to students. So for parents, we asked about how their child feels connected to their school. About 50% of parents said that they feel that their child is well-connected to their school. About 33% said reasonably connected. So the well-connected is in the green and the reasonably is in the orange area. Kids, again, a little slightly different question at the third and fourth grade level. Do you feel that you are a part of your school? And again, about 60%, 62% of the kids in green saying that they feel like they're a true Central Fox or Harper Dolphin or Mackenzie Cheetah or Moana Mustang. Have to give a shout out to Alphor. And then the orange is, is just them indicating that they feel that they're a part of their school most of the time. At the 5-8 level, we asked about connection again. And similarly to the, the remote survey, kids at the 5-8 level felt less connected to their school. I think it might be just typical 5-8 kind of feelings of connections to school. But we still had greater amounts saying that they felt well-connected and reasonably connected. So you can see, close to 75% there are still saying that there's some good level of connection to their in-person learning. The next question focused on connections to the teachers. And so parents said that 88% of them felt that their child is well or reasonably connected to their teachers. And as in the remote survey, kids at a greater percentage were saying that they felt well-connected to their teacher or reasonably well-connected to their teacher. And then peer connections. So again, teachers were really focused on making connections in their classrooms with their peers, building that classroom community. And so parents were asked about how their child felt they connected in their classroom. And parents said, 43% said well-connected and 31% said reasonably connected. So close to a little over 70% there. How close do you feel to other kids, students in your class was asked at the elementary level. And so you can see the bigger pieces of the pie there, the green and the orange are, they add up to about 84% saying that they feel close, very close, or most of the time they feel close. At 5-8, we have a different structure, so we have two groups at 5-8. So this question focused on how close or connected do students at 5-8 feel to the other students in their learning group? So if they're a Group A student, they're a Group A group, Group B student, et cetera. And so they indicated that 39.4, so close to 40%, said that they felt well-connected to the other students in their group. And 35% said reasonably connected. So again, pretty good numbers on how they're feeling connected to those kids in their group. We did ask an additional question to fifth through eighth graders about their connections with their homeroom overall. So are they feeling connected to even the kids who they don't see on a daily basis? And so we asked, your homeroom is made up of two groups, both A and B. How connected do you feel to all of the students in your homeroom? And 22% said they felt connected to their homeroom as a whole, but that red chunk, 71% said that they feel connected with only the students in their own group. So they're feeling greater connections with those that they see every day or every other day. But they're still feeling some connections with their homeroom. We asked parents about the academic impact of in-person learning and their concerns around that. 69% of parents expressed that they were not concerned or were only somewhat concerned about academic progress, with 13% saying they were very concerned. So this is an area that we want to continue to communicate and talk about what we're doing in class and continue to instill that confidence in what we're doing on a daily basis in school. Then we add three questions that specifically talked about the remote days for fifth through eighth grade. Again, to kind of hit on some of those questions we had about the, the hybrid structure. So the first question is about the synchronous learning on remote days and estimating about 150 minutes of the guidelines. Is, is that, are students receiving too little, just right, or too much synchronous learning on remote days? And you can see the parents is in that big blue bubble is 49.8% said that they were receiving too little and then 45% said it was just right, with a little sliver saying it was too much. The kids were slightly different in their perception of the amount of synchronous remote learning they were getting. The kids said 73.6% of kids said it's just right. We're getting the right amount of synchronous learning. And then about 17% said too much and about 9% said too little. So a little different perspective there, so we'll have to dig in a little bit more to see exactly what's causing that. Just like with the remote survey, we asked about how much adult support kids were needing on their remote days. And both groups said it was little to no adult support by and large, with some moderate adult support on given days. So that's a 30% parents said that and 23% of kids, so pretty similar there. And then the final question was about engagement on the remote days. So again, similarly to that synchronous learning question, you'll see that about 45% of parents felt kind of somewhat engaged, that their kids are engaging here and there. But then 32% said they're often disengaged or finishes early. The kids, a little bit differently. Again, we had about 40% saying they were highly engaged throughout the day and about 50% again, saying they were somewhat engaged with a smaller section saying they were often not engaged or finished early. So a couple of different perceptions there that we'll want to dig into. Just like with the remote survey, we offered opportunities for open-ended responses. So I'll go through the parent and family open-ended responses. When asked about communication with the district or with the, their classrooms, parents by and large said that they were receiving adequate information from their classroom. They did request at the 5-8 level, more information and feedback on remote learning days. What are we supposed to do? More direction that way. Across the board, parents just want more information on curriculum and differentiation. How is that being addressed in the classroom? And then at the district level, there were several comments just asking for more streamlined, concise information, more bullet pointed information, trying to find what they need to know. There's just so much to know, I think, at this point, so it's, it's hard to boil it down. Peer relationships. So the parents were asked about the impact of in-person learning on peer relationships. And there were so many responses that just said that their kids look forward to seeing their classmates. They like to be able to talk to their teachers. They feel like they're making connections, they can get their questions answered. A lot of people are saying that it helped their kids feel more confident with school. And especially, this was the one part where students with IEPs really were called out as benefiting greatly, which would stand to reason. We brought a lot of our students with IEPs and even on a more frequent basis. Impact on the wellbeing. And again, this kind of mirrored the, the previous responses where parents were talking a lot about, students were confident, they were more motivated to work in person, that as soon as we switched to in-person at the elementary level, kids were like ready to go in the day, whereas it was like, I want to stay in bed for an extra hour in the morning. So lots of those types of responses. Again, grades five through eight would like to see some more direction and engagement on remote days. Here's a couple of quotes that I highlighted. My child is over the moon happy to go to school every day. He comes home feeling so happy and tells me every day how lucky he is to be at school. He also speaks very highly of his teacher and feels very connected to her and his peers. He engages without any argument in his homework. This was a challenge during remote learning. I can't overestimate how important it has been that my child is in school. He feels a thousand more percent connected to his teachers, his peers and his educational content. And this is, this has been wonderful. Both of our children have been able to make new friends, revitalize their interest in learning at school and enjoy a bit of independence just by the opportunity to be outside of our home. A couple more open-ended questions from parents. We were, we asked about the positive aspects of remote learning. It brings about a sense of normalcy, routine and structure. And I, I found this was interesting because thinking about the remote survey, we had a lot of families say, gosh, we don't have to rush in the morning. We don't have to get to school on time, that sort of thing. So it's, you know, it's perspectives, right? Students making connections with classmates and teachers, better mindset and motivation and parents have a better ability to do their own work when their students are focused and outside of the home. And then we asked about ways to improve. Again, differentiation appeared, so just more clarity with how that was being addressed. Many people cited access to playgrounds. And so as you know, we've had our playground equipment off, off limits for a while. More extracurricular opportunities. 5-8, again, more connections and engagement on remote days. Better solutions for those on quarantine. And so this is an interesting thing that has come up. If, if a student is out of school because they have to quarantine, whether it's because of travel or because they've been exposed, it's treated as, for their in-person days, it's treated as an absence. And so we, we work with the family or the student and have a plan and different teachers will implement different things. But the parents indicated that they'd like a little bit more information regarding the quarantine and what can be done to help with that. And then a lot of information or a lot of requests for screenings for the virus. And so that just piggybacks perfectly on Dr. Kremis Goli's conversation earlier. Couple more quotes. There are so many good ones. But my son is proud when showing me his schoolwork. He also does homework without being nagged to complete. He is so excited to tell me about his day. Having a place to go away from home and screens has been incredibly valuable on so many levels. Our son is getting socialization as well as much more engaging academic experience, which lets him learn better. This also lets us parents work during the day so we can be present when school is over. And then finally, the structure and routine has brought about a can-do attitude. He is taking ownership of his learning. He is energized by school and much less stressed and resistant at home as he was during e-learning. Now I will turn it back over to Katie Lee for the student open-ended responses.
We also asked students some open-ended responses and one is to call out the positive and easiest aspects of in-person learning. And across the grade levels, students identified the same positive aspects of in-person learning, with the most popular being the ability to see students, teachers and friends and just simply being together. They, they really, I mean, it was just repetitive throughout. They also expressed a lot of appreciation and relief from the technology glitches, like logging into Zoom, shifting from one app to another and less screen time. And the 5-8 students in particular cited the appreciation of the structure of the hybrid Group A and B model, stating that the love of in-person interactions and going to physical school is balanced by the self-stay style of the day on the remote. So for the challenging aspects, it would be the lack of mobility, following social distancing guidelines, inability to talk and socialize with friends during lunch. You know, I think that's everything that we've anticipated. You know, as we know that students are doing a good job, but they still acknowledge that it's a challenge. Like they are, you know, it's, it's hard for them, which we can all appreciate. And then for ways to improve. So it is a challenge. We may not like it. We're still doing it. But could you please continue to enforce wearing face masks and adhering to those social distancing guidelines? They would love any breaks possible, more increase those from the masks, more activities during lunch. Can we talk to friends? Can we Zoom? Do breakout Zooms with another kid in another class so that we can engage in that way? Lots of different ideas around that and more access to outdoors if possible. And a few quotes. You get to be with friends and you get to learn many things while actually looking at your teacher in person. You get to be with friends and you get to learn many things while actually looking at your teacher in person. I like to have the break in between days, but I like in-school better because I get to be with friends. And there's no electronic problems and I can feel more connected to everybody. And these two really stood out for me. And so I added them in as representative pieces. Being in school is fun and I can learn better in that environment. And I get to work in my own case as long as the work is finished by the deadline hybrid. And, oh, excuse the typo. I get to learn visually better as well as question things if I don't know them. I think what struck out to me is how, this is in third grade, it was in fourth grade, it was in the five-eight comments as well, is how our students are able to identify what kind of learning style that they are, they gravitate toward. It's something that I think because of the situation all last year and this year, they are able to have that comparison. And I just thought those comments were really interesting, so I wanted to share that. And now Kristin is going to share on our teacher and paraprofessional data.
So we also surveyed our teachers and paraprofessionals. And on the first one slide here, we looked at health and safety protocols. We asked teachers and paraprofessionals to reflect on their level of competence in the safety protocols that we've established and been using throughout the school year. While we have many staff members that feel reasonably or very competent in our procedures, a number of staff members also indicated feeling only somewhat competent. Some of the areas that they identified later in the open-ended responses as concerning included concerns around lunch routines, the need for reminders to students to wear their masks correctly and remain six feet apart. We will continue to reflect on, monitor, and address these areas and concerns. The next area that we looked at was classroom community. Our teachers spent a lot of time at the beginning of the school year really focusing on the social emotional needs of their students and building a classroom community. We wanted to know how they felt it was going. So the green and yellow together represent that the majority of our teachers feel that students are connecting with one another, with over eighty percent reporting that students are reasonably or very well-connected. So I feel like that's a really nice affirmation of all the work that our teachers put in at the beginning of the school year. We had very few teachers report that students are not connecting with one another, but we will continue to work on this as we go through the year and as we look to the second semester, any changes in re-establishing those classroom communities. In terms of five-eight, again, as Kelly shared earlier, we do have differences in the model in the five-eight level than we do at the K-four, pre-K-four level. And so one of the questions that we asked about was in-period connections. So teachers are making in-period connections with their students for core classes at that five-level when children are remote. And we wanted to learn more about how that was going. While this was not applicable to about half of our respondents because they are at the K-four level, of those for whom it was applicable, over eighty-five percent are either confident in their planning for these connections or are growing in their confidence. So again, this is another area that we'll continue to work with our teachers on to make sure that this is a good use of everybody's time. Another question that we asked is, how is it going? The good news about these slides is that when asked, less than six percent of our staff said that in-person instruction is not going well. As you can see, most of our staff members indicated that it is going. We know that despite the great things that are happening every day in our schools, providing in-person and hybrid instruction to our students has been a complex and complicated endeavor for both our teachers and our staff. There are many new safety protocols that they must navigate as well as limited time with students. This is not the school year that any of us dreamed about. But it's encouraging that the number of staff members who indicated that it's not going well is very low. The next question we asked about though was impact on personal well-being. These slides really represent what may be the reality for many of us right now. Our personal well-being is not at its best. It is discouraging to see that fifty percent of our certified staff and thirty-four percent of our paraprofessionals indicated that in-person and hybrid learning had a negative impact on their personal well-being. The district has identified several ways to continue to help our staff feel more comfortable and confident with in-person and hybrid learning. And we will continue to address this wholeheartedly. We have committees working on it and we will continue to address this as we go forward. So then we also asked for some, got some open-ended response feedback from our teachers and paraprofessionals. Given the area that what's going well. Our teachers and paraprofessionals really emphasized how much they enjoyed the personal interactions with students. And that was across the board. I can't say how many times I saw that written down. There, the other thing that they really commented on was how happy the students are to be in school. While there are definitely concerns and challenges with the in-person and hybrid learning, multiple staff members shared that they see how much the students benefit from the in-person learning. There are several reasons that they cited for this. Small class size, individualized attention, better social interaction, and the fact that the students really value being in school. So in the next slide, this was a quote that I thought kind of summed up many people's statements. In general, in-person learning far exceeds remote learning when it comes to making connections, delivering quick and accurate feedback, observing student behavior, and delivering full-class instruction. Not to mention, it's much more fun to learn in person. Our staff really does want to be in person, just as our children do. What challenges occur? So we had similar areas of concern identified by both teachers and paraprofessionals. Many indicated that while the students are working really hard to wear their masks safely and consistently and maintain social distancing, they are children and they require multiple reminders throughout the day. Additionally, teachers shared that everything seems to take so much more time than expected and this significantly impacts their planning and instruction as well as their time away from school. Another area of worry expressed by paraprofessionals and teachers alike was worry about the consistency of safety measures being used by people outside of the school setting. So another quote, a couple of quotes. In terms of the challenges that are sort of exemplars, one is students maintaining social physical distance once outdoors. And I think that that was repeated often. Outdoors is, you know, that's where people feel a little bit freer and that becomes a hard area to police. Another one that I think was exemplary as well is the crushing amount of time everything takes, including current student communication, grading, record-keeping, planning, and posting lessons, et cetera. Everybody is being asked to teach in a completely new method in some way, shape, or form. We either compacted the day or we're asking them to balance in-person and remote. And this is a learning curve for everybody, students as well as teachers. We didn't see quite a bit from our staff, our paraprofessionals and our teachers regarding the impact that this has on students. They repeatedly stated that students have really risen to the occasion and enjoyed being back at school. While that does not negate the many reminders and continued teaching that must be done regarding masks and social distancing, teachers and paraprofessionals were overwhelmingly positive about the impact of in-person instruction on students. One quote was, even two months in, my students still seem genuinely happy to be at school each day. My home room has really bonded. Then this one. The students in classes have adjusted well to their schedules and in-person instruction and requirements. My students tell me they prefer to be in school and getting in-person instruction. They always wear their masks and have their materials in their backpacks.
So what are our next steps? It would be very similar to what we did with the remote learning program. We have a small committee that will be formed with teachers and administrators to review all the data in raw form. So they will see also all the comments and the additional information, identifying two or three focus areas, formulate those recommendations, and then develop an action plan to implement. We did ask one timely question. And we took that opportunity to conduct a temperature check at this particular moment in time, how likely they were to keep their child enrolled for in-person learning for second semester. And ninety-five percent of the survey respondents shared that they would likely have their child or children remain enrolled. Now just keep in mind, the timeframe was a couple of weeks ago. And just wanted to say that this was just a temperature check at one moment in time. And we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
That was terrific. Board members, do we have any questions? Erin, go ahead.
Thank you for such a thorough and meaningful report. So I know one of the goals with both of the reviews for the in-person and remote learners was to identify two to three areas for improvement. I'm wondering if there's any plan next semester to circle back and to assess how the plan is going and to gauge like how effective the improvement efforts are.
I think definitely we want to continue this kind of cycle of temperature checks and then review and then ask more specific questions related to those action plan items. So we can gather some data on that. Are they effective? Are there adjustments that we need to make? And so on and so forth throughout the year. Yeah.
Ms. Poling.
So I'm sure, like a lot of you, really struck by the well-being. And I look forward to hearing how we can support and what you all are planning to help our teachers feel good about the just unbelievable work they're doing.
Mr. Penzico, go ahead.
Last, the last report, I pointed out that while people self-selected for remote versus in-person, that when the fifth through eighth graders were asked, you know, how their connections were coming, it was about two-thirds were in the not very connected, somewhat connected. It's gratifying to see that the in-person numbers are, the equivalent to that two-thirds works out about twenty-five percent. Or a better way to put it is, you know, over seventy percent of the students felt that they were well-connected by being able to come to school in the remote learning. So, or in the hybrid learning. So while there's lots of reasons why we have both and there's lots of reasons why families are in one category or the other, it's good to see that even the hybrid solution makes a significant difference in the connection part, which is a significant part of the school day and the learning categories for kids. The other one that popped out to me, and yes, it was a week or two ago, but at any time period, that, you know, ninety-five percent, or really if you put unsure in the category, you could even go as high as ninety-nine percent. But let's stay with the ninety-five. Ninety-five percent of the people felt that this brand-new idea that is certainly not optimal was so good that they were committed to staying with it. Ninety-five percent in almost any kind of survey is significant. And I want to applaud the work that's been done to do that. No matter how much a parent wants their kids to be in school, if it wasn't being done well, you wouldn't get this kind of number. So I think that that's a good representation of what's been done and what is being done in our schools and makes me want to keep it going. Yes. So those are the two things that stuck up for me. And again, having these surveys of the different groups, I think, helps optimize both groups because there's reasons why people are in both groups.
Ms. Denmiller.
I just want to say, you know, I was also struck by and appreciate how difficult this has been for the teachers. And was struck by the negative impact on the certified teachers. But I was also really struck by the differing percentages of the parapros. And I found it interesting because in some ways, the reflection also on the students, particularly in the, I think it was five through eight, the students who are the special ed students reporting that they are feeling more confident. I think it was, I think you said, there's been reports like that a lot of the special ed students are feeling kind of an inverse of the older grades feeling more confident and kind of feeling like they're finding their feet more because of the small group and the different kind of structure right now. I just was struck by these numbers and that forty-three point five percent of the paras said that they were not impacted. And a large percentage found that it was even a positive impact. And I'm not negating the negative at all. Like I really am not. I would like to see an improvement in that, certainly. But I would love to capitalize on what is it that is working so well for the paras? What are they finding in this that is making them feel good and hopeful in this model that will work for the rest of the teachers? Because something is working. And so I just noticed that and I just.
Something we can totally dive more into as we get our group together and look at more of the comments.
Others?
I'm just going to add to what Frank said. The ninety-five percent aren't just people who thought it was good enough to return. They thought that the district was caring for their children and keeping them safe enough that they could return. So that is a significant vote of confidence. In addition to the metrics that say there's not in-school transmission, parents continue to send their most precious people in their lives to school.
Mr. Penzico.
Yes, I had one more thing. While this COVID is weighing on us, one of the things that I've seen in other groups, in this group, is that by forcing us to do things differently, we learn some things. And I think it's really important to remember those. So when we're done with COVID, which I hope is a lot sooner than people think, but eventually we'll be done with COVID, that we take that into account. And one of the things that I heard, and I know we always kind of talk about this, but I'm not sure how much we do about it, is this helped identify that kids themselves knew that they had different learning styles. And I know we've talked about that in the past, but you kind of talk about it and say, well, yeah, you know, we'll try to do a little bit more videos to help the kids that need or that do better with videos. But I think this really points out that even the kids can help self-select on that a little bit. And maybe an output of this is some thought committee work, you know, eventually really thinking about learning styles and subdividing kids in some ways to optimize their ability to learn and the learning style that fits them. So just whenever you can, because we're doing so many new things, if something works, think about, you know, maybe it has value after we're done with this too. And I just wanted to bring that up again.
I would agree. We keep calling out some silver linings from COVID, right? So I'd have to say too, we had a lot of positive responses, both from parents and from teachers regarding our parent conferences last week, which is another thing. They weren't running around the school speed dating style. It was more parents were able to attend as a result of the convenience. So another thing that we will keep in mind as we move forward and some things maybe we can change.
Great. Any other comments before we move to the fall assessment report?
I would just add, thank you to Katie, Kelly, and Kristin and on behalf of the whole administrative team, but especially the three of you who put the reports together. It is yet another huge endeavor of time and talent and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next we have even more reporting from Katie Lee, who's going to share with us a most unique fall 2020 assessment report. Because as many will recall, we did not administer the assessment in the spring. And so we are looking at data a little bit differently this time. And yet I think there still are many nuanced takeaways that we can accomplish by reviewing this report. So I will let Katie go ahead and take over and give us the fall assessment report, please.
Yeah, I will do my very best here. So as you know, we do report on previous years' achievement and growth with spring assessment data, both state and also local. And as Carrie has just shared, that was not available. And so, but we wanted to share the data we did have, but in a different way. So you did receive in your board packets, the board report, a table that is very similar. So you did receive in your board packets, or the board report, a, um, table that is very similar to what we usually present to you, but today, um, I'm going to adjust the visuals into a different format so that it could answer some questions, um, that come up. So if you don't mind, a few minutes of intro. Um, if I can advance, there we go. Um, this is the same background information that I just shared, that there was no IAR, which is the Illinois Assessment Readiness, um, because it was canceled in the spring. Um, and then in the same vein, District 39 also canceled all their spring local assessments, which included the spring NAP. This year, however, um, all signs point toward we're going full force with state assessment. We'll monitor that on the Illinois State Board of Education website and also the webinars that we attend, and all our local assessments will be administered as well. A complete list of all the assessments that we do, um, use are on our website. However, in particular, I will be sharing NAP growth information, and so I wanted to let everyone know that fall, winter, and spring administration will occur. We finished fall administration, and also knew this year is that each, after each administration, we are sending home reports, family reports, um, to all families so that they could see the results. Now, given that this wasn't because of the unique year, it actually was something in the works in our plan anyway for this year, so we're just moving forward, um, as naturally as possible. So for the MAP growth assessment, for the families who, um, you know, are new, uh, to the district or they're taking it for the first time, I just wanted to share that our, um, district used this assessment starting four years ago, so this is the fourth year of implementation. This is a computer adaptive assessment, and it's only one tool used. So, um, to monitor second through eighth grade student achievement and growth, and we do it three times a year, as I said, um, when the students finish the MAP process, a RIT score is calculated that indicates the level at which the student was correctly answering questions of similar difficulty and complexity 50% of the time. The RIT is an abbreviation for RASH Unit, which is the Stable Equal Interval Scale. Equal interval means that the difference between the scores is the same and measures student performance regardless of age, grade, or grade level. So this year, um, fall administration was, um, a task in that we, we needed to administer to the different models of instruction, um, that, that we have this year, and so we wanted to let you know that for all of our grades, second through fourth, um, students, all the in-person learners were, um, tested in person. We also offered the in-person, um, opportunity for any of our enhanced remote learning program learners. So we did have families who took us upon, you know, that offer, and so they came in to do it in person. Now, the remote would be that all, all grades, um, second through fourth grade enhanced remote learners, who did not take that option, uh, was administered remotely, uh, with a proctor across Zoom. All grades five through eight hybrid learners, and also enhanced remote learners as well, uh, was administered remotely. And another group that we made, um, special consideration for was the, the students who have an individual education plan, IETs, or Academic 504 Plan, and most of those students, um, in grades two through eight also tested in person.
It might help if you moved a little closer to your microphone.
Okay.
Or moved your microphone closer to you.
Thanks, okay. So this report is different from past assessment reports, um, with the absence of fall 2019 to spring 2020 data to measure student progress for last year's academic growth. We'll be presenting data for fall 2019 to fall 2020, um, achievement and growth comparison period. So this data is going to serve two purposes for us. It provides data that will offer an opportunity of reflection for the unique school year we had last year, but also serve as our baseline, um, for information or starting point for this current school year. So really, the question on almost everyone's mind is, how did our students do last year? Or in other words, did our currently enrolled District 39 students achieve and grow as much as expected last year? And to provide even more specific examples, to also lay the context of this data, it's did our current third graders achieve and grow as much as expected during their second grade year? Or did our current sixth graders achieve and grow as much as expected during their fifth grade year? I'm trying to, and it's, it's very easy for us when we say fall 2019 to spring 2020 that it captures the year before, but I found that I even had to be very conscious of saying that I'm going to be talking about currently enrolled grade levels, but referencing the year before as far as their academic growth. Okay. So the conclusions, actually, uh, while reviewing the MAP data, we concluded this about student achievement. District 39 students' fall 2019 to fall 2020 achievement has yielded consistent results to previous years. In student growth, District 39 students' fall 2019, fall 2020 growth has yielded consistent results to previous years except for noteworthy results of current fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students in math. It is, um, it was important to keep in mind that many factors contribute to the results. And yes, one factor worthy of consideration is the fact that last school year, a portion of learning was disrupted by the shift to remote learning in March. However, to conclude that there is a cause and effect relationship would be misleading. So let's start with student achievement. I'm going to use this slide, um, to share with you how the data is displayed, and then I have a similar slide for each of the grade levels so that you can see the pattern. So the grade two average RIT demonstrates that there's no significant change, positive or negative, in achievement in fall 2020 compared to past years at the elementary level. So the blue bar in this case, and the purple, and the yellow, and the green, they all represent different second graders, groups of different second graders. And so in order to determine how did our second graders do compared to other second graders, um, in the past, we, I had to let go of the cohort model of sharing information with you and speak to you about the grade level. So when we do that, and we look back at fall 2017, fall 2018, fall 2019, and fall 2020, you could see that the RIT scores really did not adjust or decline here. And the first set is for math, and the second set is for reading. Okay? I have, the rest of the slides are... This is for third grade. There's a slight RIT, um, dip in math there, but the rest you can see are pretty consistent. And this is fourth grade. And this is fifth grade. And this is sixth grade. And seventh grade. And finally, our current eighth grade. So in each of these, it shows that our achievement levels for our students really stayed pretty consistent, maybe a little, a couple of points off here and there, um, but pretty much consistent throughout. So for student growth, as you can see, um, let's look at student growth. So the first thing, uh, that I'd like to make sure, um, that it's very clear is that we are looking at fall-to-fall growth comparison periods. So these estimates of the projections is based on reasonable growth expectations, based on their grade, their starting RIT score, and the subject matter. So in the, when we share fall to spring later this year, those projections are different than fall-to-fall projections because it includes the summer months as well. But it's important to know that MAP assessment is statistically designed so that 50% of the students meet growth projections and 50% do not. So when the data produces growth percentages that are greater, namely around 70% or higher, it is a sign of high performance. So I will use third grade as an example again to do, um, a deeper explanation, and then the rest of the slides will follow. So this one is for third grade, the percent meeting expected fall-to-fall growth. The graph represents three different groups of third grade students and the percentage of students who've met those expected fall-to-fall growth. So it's fall of second grade to the fall of third grade. The blue bar represents fall 2018 third graders, the purple bar represents fall 2019 third graders, and the yellow bar represents the current fall 2020 third graders enrolled in our school today. The first set of bars illustrates the percentage of students who have met expected fall-to-fall growth in math, and the second illustrates the same but for reading. Each year, the percentage of students meeting expected fall-to-fall growth is consistent with NWA's research, since it falls within or beyond 50% to 60% range. Now, in math, the percentage of current third graders are less than past third graders in 2018 and 2019. And in reading, however, the number of third graders have increased each year with the highest number, 74% of current third graders, meeting fall-to-fall growth. This is the same but for a fourth grade. And as you can see, a pretty significant dip in our current fourth graders, which is a reflection of their third grade year. This is fifth grade. Sixth grade. Now, this one is noteworthy, um, to pause and explain. So in, in math, what we strive to, um, get as far as percentages is at least 50%. And so with math, we do see a pattern of less than that. So that is an indication that we, in the Department of Curriculum Instruction, working with our teachers, need to look at and review, what is the curriculum, what are the instructional approaches? How can we improve, how can we support in this area? Because there's a pattern, um, and a trend that is very obvious and not specific to, um, last year. And this is grade seven. And finally, grade eight. Okay, now that we've, um, reviewed achievement and growth separately, I'm going to attempt to show you it together. Okay, so these are stacked bar graphs, and the key to your, um, left, uh, will show that the blue represents the high achievement, high growth. So we want those percentages to be high. The low achievement, high growth, we also would like to be high because we're valuing the growth of our students. So regardless of low achievement or high achievement, we want those numbers to increase over time or just be greater. And then the high achievement, low growth is in the orangey-yellow, and the low achievement, low growth represents our low achievement and low growth. So visually, our goal would be that the cooler colors, the blue and the green, would occupy more of that stacked bar, and this is a pattern of, uh, math in 2018, 2019, and 2020, the intersection of achievement and growth. This is also for math. The next one is for reading. So visually, if I could point out, visually, this is what we would like to see our students do over time. As you can see, that the, the blue, the high achievement and, um, hi, sorry, high achievement, high growth, low achievement, high growth are both occupying most of that stack this year, and you could also see how the low achievement, low growth has declined over time. But again, these are separate groups of children, so I want to make sure that I'm not confusing, um, saying that these are the same group of children that are progressing this way. And this is fourth grade. Fifth grade math. Grade math. For an eighth graders in math, and also in reading. So when we go back to our question of, did District 39, um, students achieve and grow as much as expected last year? I remind you of that first slide with the conclusions. As far as achievement, our students are on par. So for all the factors that you can play into, um, what happened from 2019 to 2020, our achieving, our achievement yielded the same results. In student growth, however, um, as you could see, or if you look in the chart that I, um, or the table that I shared with you in the board report, there are certain grades that did show a significant change, and it was in the content of math. So it's our current fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, but it was a reflection of last year's performance. So our next steps, um, as we do after all, you know, fall assessment reviews or data reviews, is there would be a district level, which is what you saw now, um, we'll have school-level sessions with administrators and sharing this data, um, through them to teachers. Some professional development with a focus in math is definitely necessary, um, not just because of this particular set of data, but just in general. And then we do, hopefully, with fingers crossed, um, we did receive a GRIP grant. One of our teachers applied for a GRIP grant for a wonderful professional development opportunity pre-pandemic, um, and so we're working with, um, Greg Tane, which is the organization, and also the individual's name, um, to bring that professional development and real experiences with students here in a unique and interesting way for this year. Um, and the math curriculum review is scheduled for this coming fall, but what we are going to do, um, later in 2021, maybe starting in February, is look into our curricular resources, especially for our younger grades. Um, what we need to do is, um, expedite some of the materials review so that we could be ready for a small committee of teachers to take a look, try some of those lessons, see if they're more supportive to their level of readiness for math instruction, and then also just to find, you know, to develop their, um, area of, of expertise in this area. Questions that I can try to answer?
Board members? I'll start, Katie, by thanking you very much, uh, for that report. Go ahead, Mr. Benzika.
It's so nice to hear the word testing and have it be related to learning. So I, I'm very glad that we've been having that opportunity tonight. Um, I would be remiss if I did not ask, uh, do you have this data broken out, boys versus girls?
I do not have it broken out.
I will, um, I will ask that question less this time because of so many other things going on, but it doesn't mean that I think less of the question. I understand that. I understand that there's a lot of work going on and there's limited resources. However, I think there is a potential potential issue that you need to think about if you can address or understand. And there are issues about the ability to focus and, you know, learning curves at different ages for boys and girls and all that type of stuff. It would seem to me that the remote learning that we were doing in the spring in particular particularly disadvantaged children that had a hard time focusing. So if there is some correlation there, I think it's important to somewhere at least look at it, whether you do something different with it or not. But if if there was clear in some of this data that that the the children that had more trouble focusing had even more trouble focusing in a remote environment than when we're looking at how to make up for the the COVID effect, shall we say? I think that's something that that shouldn't could be taken into account. So I'm not, you know, assuming that I know the answer to that by any means, but I'm assuming that you have the data that you could get it, and it is something that I think would be worth your looking at to see if there's some difference. And then for next year, and I understand what's going on now, but really, the 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 data in the reading difference between boys and girls is a couple of sigma. It's not trivial. And when we do something as disruptive as have fun with COVID, you know, I'm concerned that that might accentuate that even more. So please try and take that into account when we're looking at how to basically catch up with the the learning that that slowed down a little bit, not because of anything we've done, but because the environment just is not the environment that we would like. But let's make sure we don't disadvantage kids that were already at a different stage in the world.
Mr. Sees, ready?
Add on what you just said, I think, Frank. Thanks for this, Katie. It's great. And it's really nice to see, it's like a long dataset that we use to measure growth and achievement. I know a ton of work went into that near and dear to Mark's heart. It's really impressive to see. It occurred to me in, you know, thinking about the kids who, you know, the achievement levels are good, but they sort of missed out on probably growth that should have happened. You know, are we, is it something we could think about as far as mediating that? Do we put more resources into those kids to get them where they should have been at some point, maybe it's a little early to?
Well, that would be part of, right, it would be part of our data discussions and identifying specifically, you know, which children did not grow even their, even though their achievement was at a good place, you know, why didn't they make that growth? What is, you know, happening and looking at that when we review the data as a team? So it would start this year.
So it's gonna happen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Other folks? Go ahead, Mr. Steen.
Yeah, I'm just trying to bring some normalcy into our crazy 2020. If you didn't hear from me on growth during the fall assessment report, you wouldn't know what to do. So the, so, you know, this, this is, this is the last time I will get to weigh in on this as a board member. So I wanted to say, you know, it's been a, it has been a journey, but I'm really, really happy with where we're getting to. I really think that by doing this work, we found a way to identify some students, and I'm thinking particularly about the high achievement, low growth students, that we can really take a focus on and, you know, hopefully be able to move the needle on them in a way that, you know, will improve outcomes for the entire district, in my opinion. I'm just going to review that I have my little five-letter acronym, DMEC, that I think about, define, measure, analyze, improve, and then continue to monitor. And I think we've done a good job of defining that we have some some expectations, not only around achievement, but also around growth. And I think what we've got now is a real way of measuring and some enough longitudinal data so that we can really do some analytics on it. And I am just thrilled that that you all will have the opportunity to really focus in on this, and I'm looking forward to the improvements and then continue monitoring. Thank you, thank you, thank you for many years of going through this with me, Katie.
And Mr. Steen, thank you for your dedication to this. Right, you kind of kept up a drumbeat of let's look at student growth. And I just want to add that, you know, we've used that scatter plot to understand. And I just want to say, I love those bar graphs. They, I mean, Katie, your presentation tonight just really, I think, was so much more attainable, at least in terms of the data, like I, I got it. So I wanted to thank you, and I, even a bigger thank you than normal because you did it at the same time as you've been managing, you know, the COVID response. Other, other thoughts on this? Mr. Nwala.
First of all, I know this was a total piece of cake, Katie, putting this all together, easy peasy, right? But yeah, I also want to echo that I love the new format. As a visual person, I'm with Lisa on that one. But kind of building off what Mark said, the, I guess you wouldn't be a maven of growth, but whatever we would call you, the the master of growth. Yeah. Since, you know, he expressed that he's so excited now that we have a means of measuring, you know, the growth in terms of that that one piece showing the growth of high, high achievement, high growth. For me, what is most exciting is to be able to identify the other areas, actually, where you have students that have unleashed potential still, where we haven't, where we haven't figured out how to help them grow yet, but we've identified that there's a need. And I think that's really just such an amazing thing that you've been able to put this together, and now we have a means of tracking that and bringing all the students up to that same level in the district. So thank you for that. Look forward to seeing what happens next.
Other people? All right. Great job, team. Thank you so much. Great job, Mark. It's nice that it's gotten here, but, you know, in your last year, that you can really see this.
Really great. It really is great. Thank you.
So should we move on to annual business? Dr. Krim Skolli?
Wonderful, thank you. And thank you, Katie, for that excellent report. In the annual business items, there are a couple of reports that are provided to the board. Those relate to enrollment within our district. So the the reports have been provided to the board. Thank you, Tony Demonte, for putting these reports together. He is here to answer questions, but I will just provide a quick summary, and if there are questions, we're happy to answer those. In terms of the 2020 Fall Enrollment Report, annually, the district provides a fall enrollment report that captures the number of students attending District 39 schools as of enrollment on October 1st. This year, there are 3,385 students educated in District 39 schools. In addition, we also examine the number of students we have a responsibility to educate. This number is higher as it includes early childhood students receiving itinerant speech at the MECC, students outplaced at therapeutic settings, and students receiving special education services at St. Joseph and St. Francis. Our our fall enrollment total is 3,428 students. Again, Tony compiled this report for the board and is happy to answer any questions the board may have regarding this report.
Board members? I have just a quick question. So to what extent do we feel like COVID impacted enrollment? Were there people who just thought, oh, I better go private? Was, did that have anything to do with the change in enrollment?
There was, there was definitely a drop. My suspicion is that it was connected to COVID and families' desires of how to educate their children differently. So there was 133 student count difference between last year this time and this year. We had been, as a district, trending downward, but that was to the tune of 30 or 40 students a year. So to go from that to 133, there's definitely a difference there. And that could be a variety of different things. It could be childcare-related, it could be parents quarantining somewhere else. It could be, I, there's a variety of reasons why that could be, but yes, my suspicion is that's, that's a pretty large drop, especially when you look at historical numbers, and we have those, as you can see, going back many years. So there's definitely something different.
I will make note that it does seem like each grade cohort is a little bit smaller at our younger ages, and so what that's attributable to is hard to tell. I would want to look back a little more closely to see if that's a trend that we see. We do see a lot of families moving in with school-aged children to our district, and so that increases the older grade cohorts a little bit more. The other thing that I thought was noteworthy is that this year's fall enrollment, we saw fewer kindergarten students, and I think that may be some families having made a choice to delay entrance to kindergarten. We heard a lot, our principals heard a lot, at the start of the school year and at the end of last school year, in light of COVID and all the restrictions and the nuances that we're grappling with in education. I think there were some families who made some choices simply to delay kindergarten entrance. So it'll be interesting to see what happens the next year with kindergarten enrollment as well.
And you may have some questions as we transition to the long-term enrollment projections. But if you recall, one year ago, we had talked about how capturing students in kindergarten due to keeps enrollment could actually give us a boost in student counts as kids who start with us will then stay with us as opposed to when we didn't offer some type of full-day option, we did have families that went and enrolled in a parochial setting or somewhere else. And once kids and families have built relationships with kids, the school community, they tend to stay there. So again, due to COVID, keep did not pan out exactly how we thought it would one year ago. So, but as we regain some assemblage of normalcy, we should see some numbers go back up, I predict.
Mr. Steen?
I just want to, I just want to be a little bit careful too, because we had a really large eighth grade class last year that graduated, so 461 is one of the largest that we've had.
That's right.
Probably the second largest that we've had over this entire time period, if I'm looking correctly. And so if I look, you know, at sort of year-to-year comparison, so last year's second grade to this year's third grade, there are actually only two classes sizes that that look like they went down. In fact, it is second to third grade and and fourth to fifth grade. So and and they weren't by that that many. So it may be that a lot of the enrollment difference, even though it, there certainly may be a COVID effect, but I, I think we should be careful with jumping to that conclusion too quickly because of the really big difference in in eighth grade, just as that that one class graduated.
Yeah, it's not uncommon for us to have bubbles that work their way through our system. It happens and continues to happen. It is certainly a big, as you pointed out, unknown why the the stark difference. Could be a variety of different reasons, quite frankly, as opposed to just being able to point just that one. Good point.
Okay, other board members? Sounds like we might have another bubble next year, kindergarten bubble. Okay, so ready for long term? Tony?
All right. And again, the long-term enrollment projections, this is an annual report. Overall, District 39's long-term enrollment projections show a decline. Our elementary schools show a slightly larger decrease at McKenzie and Ramona than at Harbor and Central. High Crest enrollment is also projected to be on a downward trend. Womet Junior High is projected to be stable over the next couple of years, but then decrease like the other schools. It remains to be seen how this school year's dip in enrollment will impact our long-term enrollment. Again, Tony compiled this report and is happy to answer any additional questions the board may have.
Just to be clear, as as we are talking a downward trend, over time, our enrollment is generally stable. We don't see stark differences as other school districts experience, but would be remiss if we didn't say there was wasn't a downward trend because there is, but it's just, it's not stark.
Board members, are there any questions? Mr. Benzica?
Do we, do we have, is it too early to get any data from the real estate people in terms of, you know, I know the real estate market was impacted by potentially people moving out of the city, and and usually that means they bring their kids with them. So do we have any feel for that kind of a pent-up increase?
You know, real estate was kind of interesting in the sense that we actually have fewer rentals this year as we did previous years, which I thought was kind of, I wouldn't have thought that, actually. The other thing going on is, as I noted in the report, there's two developments to keep an eye on. One's going to start constructing next year, one is projected to begin construction next year. Both are in McKenzie boundaries, and one, I think, has, did I put 32 units? And the other one is like 132, and that's made up of one, two, and three-bedroom units, the potential to have families enter in our system. So, you know, we do talk about new single-family or new residential construction, which you can see on here, which when you compare this year to previous years, I mean, there's, well, actually, I don't know if that data is on there, but there's, outside of the one-to-one correspondence, there is potential to add some more students. But as far as bigger implications, as far as the real estate market, I, I didn't get into that conversation. I did have a conversation with the permitting department at Village of Womet, but they didn't indicate, nor did we discuss anything larger than what you see here.
Mr. Sees, ready?
Tony, I know, I remember this chart every year, and I remember it always looks the same.
Very similar.
Yeah, but it never turns out to be this way.
That's right.
Actually, we did go back and check how we have the projections because we do work with a company, Berger Systems, that helps us with these demographic projections, and they're pretty close in what they predict. Yeah, I mean, there's birth rates that are generally similar, move-in rates that are, I mean, it's pretty dead-on. I'm not sure anyone could have predicted this year, so for their projections, they use data from multiple years, not just last, you know, this year's was not necessarily a good sample to do the five-year projections that you're used to seeing, but generally, they're, they're pretty accurate, actually. In fact, I think one year ago, I talked In fact, I think one year ago, I talked to you guys about, if I remember correctly, it was somewhere within 10 or less accurate as far as what they had predicted versus what it was. So again, Willmet's fairly stable. It's traditionally very stable.
That's maybe different than any other year.
Yeah, this year is definitely, I, this is a weird one, for sure. So we'll see how this year impacts, when we talk one year from now, how the long-term projections look.
Any other questions? Mark?
I just, I'm just going to make a, a suggestion that, and I, I honestly hadn't noticed that until just this year, but, you know, if I look at the short-term version of this, as I was just doing those numbers, what's interesting is that it is, it is common that all of the grades individually go up. In other words, the second grade last year to the third grade this year will, will increase, but the overall enrollment will go down. And so it may be that in the long-term projections, one thing that we want to look at is how those grade-to-grade increases are happening, because I, as opposed to kindergarten enrollment going down dramatically, I think what's happening is that we are actually getting sort of less increase at the higher grades, move-ins, I suppose, than what we might have gotten historically. So I, I haven't thought about it deeply yet, but that, that might be something that we want to think about to enhance our long-term.
Final thoughts? Tony, thank you so much. Always interesting. So now, let me turn it over to Dr. Kremesgoly for Board Policy Review.
Well, thank you. This evening, we are conducting the first reading of Board, of the Board of Education Policies 5:10, 5:100, 7:10, 7:180, and 7:185. The review and update of these policies are directly related to updated requirements for Title IX. You will notice there are no suggested revisions to 5:100. However, that is a policy that is suggested to be reviewed as a result of the new Title IX regs. It has been reviewed, but no revisions are suggested, suggested, excuse me. The other policies did have minor to moderate revisions.
Board members, is there any discussion? Okay. Then I'm going to move on to public comment. This is another opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members present that wish to address the board? If so, please come forward to the podium. I must remind all guests to use the microphone, state your name and community of residence, and by Board Directive, you are allowed three minutes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Lindsay Ratai. I'm at Ramona. I have a a fourth grader and a first grader, and one of your points that you guys wanted was regarding, sorry, I've never done this before, so, not only is it past my bedtime, but, um, my boy, he's in first grade, and seeing him being in person from, especially reading, has gone from like not wanting to read to, like, we had his conference, he like, has done so much better being in person, because with the remote, you know, he just didn't want to do it, he didn't want to do the seesaws. He always would do the morning meetings, but it just wasn't the greatest thing. Um, first off, I do want to thank you all so much for getting the kid in person. I know there's so much drama around it, but thank you for getting them in person. One of the things that I did, I was on the metrics meeting for, on Friday for an hour and a half, and I thought what was interesting was there was a lot of emotion over facts. And I don't really get that sense from you guys, but one of the things I know, like, with the Department of Health, they have changed from the beginning of November, the confirmed cases and added on probable cases. So we see a huge spike, but in a sense of like, not just COVID cases. And so I don't want us to like, like, I know we're going to do the pause, but is it going to be, we can't just look at the numbers. And like, I don't think it's realistic to think that the numbers are going to go low over Thanksgiving. And just to think that we look at all the cases, even though we've done so well with the kids in person, I think we need to be realistic and not just look at the number of cases in Illinois or our metrics here, knowing that they have changed how they're defining, because it could be just the flu now, it could be a cold. It's not just COVID that they're putting in the numbers, so. That's my, hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who'd like to speak? I can't see in the,
We're, we're looking for you, Lisa. We're not seeing others stand up yet. Anyone else would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to the written communications that were submitted via public comments, if that's okay.
Yep. Tony, can you please read the public comments?
Sure. We will need, I think Frank to time, if you would. And we did receive comments, multiple comments from a few people, so what we'll do is, we'll, those were grouped, so we'll read those for the full three minutes, and then we'll stop at that point. I think Mark had mentioned that last time as a suggestion, so. Okay, and then Heather and I will actually take turns, just, you know.
All right, first person, Rousha Patel. Hi, I just wanted to take a minute and applaud you all on the metrics emails and research and data-driven guidance. I have to say, at least from the parents at the elementary level, the parents appreciate the emails reminding to practice good mask-wearing. It is important for all of you to keep reminding the community why we were all doing this, to keep in-person going. I think that the take is, we are sacrificing Thanksgiving gatherings and travel for keeping schools open, which everyone is happy to do. I think the pivot to remote will be 100% will 100% throw that in the wrong direction with kids getting together indoors, parents not being vigilant, and the community giving up. I think Willmet parents have not given up due to the schools remaining open. So thank you for the emails stating how everyone is working together, as well as the research and data-driven guidance. Parents are really taking that to heart and rethinking gatherings and socializing in order to keep kids in school. Just wanted to give you the positive feedback and to keep the momentum going, to keep everybody socially aware and masked up for one common goal, schools to remain in-person. Everyone is so happy and thankful that you all are doing everything with the new research and data and helping us to keep, helping you have us open in-person. Applaud, applaud. Keep up the positive work. Positive feedback is all I've received from so many parents. Rousha Patel also sent an image. And it's, it's in the email, but it's of a student writing about in-person instruction. The next person, the next one from Rousha Patel. "We are in Phase 4, and the governor has not ordered schools to close in-person instruction. All research and data has shown schools are not super-spreaders. I'm an essential worker, and we are not ordered to stay at home. The articles posted to the D-39 Metrics Meeting two weeks ago pointed to the schools staying open despite lockdowns in countries. Schools are the safest place for children. D-39 has done a wonderful job with kids in masks, social distancing, and cleaning measures, and zero COVID cases have come from schools. The elementary kids need to be in-person learning environments. The stay-at-home advisories do not include person schools, in-person schools. Closing schools between Thanksgiving and Christmas does not need to happen. Need for a shift to remote does not need to occur for our children. The children are the ones losing the need for adult behavior to improve, losing in the need for adult behavior to improve. My kindergartner cannot sit in front of a screen all day. There will be more stress and tears than anyone needs during COVID. Kids in schools is recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics. My pediatrician was so thrilled that my kids were in daily in-person instruction. She said that is what kids need." Is that the, yep, okay.
The next one is from Sue Kim. "Dear Willmet Superintendent and Board President, the Willmet Parent Group, this Willmet Parent Group and I would like to voice our avid support for in-person learning. We share the views of the American Academy of Pediatrics that socialization beyond close friends and family is a critical component of child development and hugely influential in their overall maturation and mental health. Although the current remote option has notably improved from what was offered this spring, we highly value in-person school learning and would advocate for even more in-person interactions if possible. We are larger in numbers beyond the small group, but just learned of the various complaints that may potentially jeopardize even the limited in-person learning currently in place. And as a result, we are sending you this quick note. If necessary, we and other parents would gladly provide more support for expanded in-person learning. Please advise and take this into consideration before any extreme changes reverting back to fully remote are implemented. Thank you. Regards, Sue Ramona."
Brian Novalee. "According to the district's own assessment, schools have experienced good success in implementing mitigation procedures and have seen no evidence of within-school transmission of the virus. Additionally, the structure and mitigation procedures of our schools help to make schools safer than many other locations throughout our community. If schools are not adding risk to the community, then what is gained by shutting them down? Why would the Board of Education choose to increase learning loss for students without any clear benefit? Willmet 39 is doing a great job of providing safe hybrid education. Please keep it going. Our children are depending on you. Thanks."
Next one is from Rachel Hellegram. "Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Kremesgoly, for doing an excellent job moderating today's meeting while also providing updates since last week's meeting. I understand that a temporary stay-at-home order from the governor is potentially imminent. My feedback today is to provide some parental perspective as we move forward. The WEA and teacher-nurse representation on the committee is strongly biased toward remote. They have been this way from the start. I am wondering whether there are teachers with differing viewpoints who would be willing to participate in these discussions. I believe that some fresh input from teachers in these meetings would be invaluable. The teacher input thus far has been disturbing, disturbingly negative. My child's teacher, as well as other staff, have shared with me that the value of, shared with me the value of teaching in-person. I'd assume that these individuals are not the only ones who feel this way. It would be helpful to have more balanced and fair representation of the teachers and staff. I will again point out the overwhelmingly amount of subjective and fear-based reporting from teachers on the committee. For the second week in the, in a row, a member of the team spoke out of turn on the alleged feelings of in-person families who now feel unsafe. This member teaches remotely, so her claim to know the feelings of in-person families is questionable at best, not to mention how highly inappropriate it is to bring this type of hearsay to a metrics committee meeting. Allow in-person families to speak for themselves, please. Additionally, there is a lack of discussion regarding how our circumstances affect the well-being of our children. Both Frank Panzika and Mark Steen touched on this today. Unfortunately, the teachers on the committee consistently have not incorporated student needs into their arguments unless it supports their viewpoint. An example from today was a statement suggesting that substitutes will not provide the quality of education that regular staff does. Therefore, remote is the better option. The teacher-staff on the committee continue to neglect discussion regarding the social-emotional needs of the students. It is undeniable that these teachers are making sacrifices that they would have never imagined. It has been said in previous meetings that teacher morale has been low. That is understandable. How very different it would be if the union leaders set a positive example for teachers they represent. D-39 teachers and staff should take tremendous pride in the work being done to serve our children. How proud they should feel to work in a district that demonstrates such strong commitment to our children. The union reps should be giving teachers positive feedback for a job well-done while modeling a positive attitude. The negativity from these folks in the meeting is exhausting. I can only imagine how this negative tone affects the teachers. Given that our metrics consistently have been good within the school environments, the continued negativity and bias from WEA reps against in-person learning is frankly astonishing. It also is cause."
There were two from that parent, so I'm just putting that off to the side. Christina Ballister. "Dear Dr. Kremesgoly and Board, I want to email after listening to the metrics meeting this morning with a few observations. It is quite apparent that when a board mem, when the board members are speaking about the rise in surrounding counties and concern, they are mindful of the worry about spread and also the way, the concerns about the students who have comprehensive needs for learning. I was disheartened through what I listened to on Ms. Cartwright and Resedo. And to be honest, I was pretty taken back by the lack of commentary by either teachers with respect to the needs of the children in the setting and how the change to e-learning can negatively impact those with comprehensive needs. It is if they've had their minds made up from the beginning and with the surrounding area have a rise, area having a rise in posit, positive, it's an automatic no-brainer to switch to e-learning. This is quite evident to the observer listening, watching. The fact that the minute Mark Steen had something to say to support the good work that's occurring, and the kids are also at risk of losing, that I watched Ms. Cartwright hand go right up to refute it. Respectfully, this is not a ping-pong game. As you know, this requires a thoughtful analysis of all aspects that need to be weighed. In looking at the data in the school setting, there appears to be almost 100% efficacy supporting no transmission for the past two months amongst students. So really, when you look at what's occurring outside of the school setting, it's not impacting inside the school setting. And while people panic about what's occurring in the community, Heather Goulacki said it best, "School setting remains the safest place for our children because they can be assured to remain in, with their masks, remain in their masks with social distancing practices and proper measures in place. We cannot afford an adaptive pause because teachers want to take a break over Thanksgiving and maybe travel, or even because families choose to, for that matter. If the worry is that over Thanksgiving, people will be exposed to new people that they haven't seen before and placed at risk, we're no more at risk than when we walk into the Whole Foods and stand there for 15 minutes in line with others who we typically don't see. And yet, there is strong sentiment that an adaptive pause is imminent because the number's rising outside of school. That just doesn't make sense. I encourage you to continue to be innovators with regards to leading the charge in logic and data, taking the emotion of fear and reaction out of it. Lastly, I listened intently when one of your members spoke how his older child would likely be okay with e-learning, but that his younger child has comprehensive needs and is up against many challenges if things shift. I echo the sentiments and iterate that my child, who is five, will most definitely take a step back if he's forced to watch a screen for two hours for a lengthy period of time. In fact, we just found out he's in 6% with regards to his letter learning, because in September, he really couldn't attend online."
This one is from Kara Fleming. "Dear D-39 Board, I understand that there will be a recommendation for a full week of remote instruction during the week of November 30th. I urge you to reject this measure. I would urge the board to keep as many students as possible in school. The current arrangement is working well for my children and for all of my friends and neighbors in the schools. Even when a case has been identified, the class and contact level quarantine has worked. If families are traveling over Thanksgiving holiday, I personally am not and do not know anyone of anyone who is, I would suggest they be given the option to attend class remotely for the appropriate quarantine period upon returning to Illinois. Please do not force all students to be remote. This should be a last resort. Thank you for your consideration. Kara Fleming."
Kathy Peach, District 39 Board of Education. "On behalf of the Students Staff Union, Support Staff Union, we urge you to pivot to remote learning as soon as possible. Because of the record number of positive cases of the virus, along with increasing hospitalization, the members of the district's support staff would like to follow the stay-at-home advisory from the Mayor of Chicago and suburban Cook County Health Department. We realize that remote learning can be challenging for, for the district families. We're ready and willing to do our parts to continue the education of students in Willmet while they are learning remotely. Members of the Willmet Support Staff Union care deeply for the students that we support each day and hope that this pause from in-person learning will allow the rate of new infections to decrease. We thank the board for all their efforts in keeping Willmet school community safe and believe the pivot to remote learning at this time is in line with those efforts. Thank you for your time."
Hi, my name is Laurlyn Meyer. I'm a parent of three full-remote students, a son in fifth grade at High Crest, a daughter in third grade. in third grade, and another son in first grade, both at Harper. Thank you for all that you have done to make the best of what has been a crazy and complicated year. I've listened to the last board meeting, and I have some thoughts and concerns about the transition from first semester to second semester for remote students, especially at the elementary level. It makes sense to me that remote students who choose to switch in person will get put back with their home schools. I would hope the same would be true if the Board decides to go full remote across the district for the second semester. In other words, if all students are remote, then current remote students should be placed back in classrooms with their home schools. However, if we still have both in-person and remote options during the second semester, which I'm guessing is likely to be the case, I would ask that you be extremely mindful of how you handle incorporating new, former in-person students into remote classes and equally careful in how you decide to rearrange remote classes, teachers, and students. A bit about our experience with remote learning this semester. My third grader has already had three teachers this year. She is only just now bonding with her latest teacher and finally making a couple of new friends. It was a long road to get this, to get this stable place for her. And I am genuinely worried about her mental health should she have to adjust to yet another teacher and routine come January. On a side note, her current teacher, Amanda Wow, has proven herself to be extremely kind, hardworking, and flexible with students and parents alike. We wouldn't be where we are without her dedication and commitment. My first grader hit a low point about a month ago when he told his teacher that he hated school and didn't want to be alive anymore. It is awful to see that level of frustration and hopelessness in a six-year-old child. It has taken us weeks to get to a place where he finally feels positive about school and confident in his abilities to do his work and connect with his classmates. And again, I have to give so much credit to both his teacher, Kelly Harney, and our Harper principal, Erin Dubnow, for stepping in to work with my son. I'm happy to report that he's doing so much better, but I still worry about his mental health should he have to be separated from his teacher with whom he's built such good rapport, or from the four good friends that he's made in class. All this to say that some students may be better equipped to be shuffled around in the second semester than others. When you send out the survey asking parents whether they will be choosing in-person or remote learning, could you please include a section where parents can tell you? One, how much change their child can mentally handle? Two, what measures can be taken to help their child transition more smoothly? Example, if you have to give my child a new teacher, please keep him with these four friends, et cetera. Thank you for your consideration, your time and consideration, Lauralyn Meyer.
Jessica Myers. Please, we must plan for at least two weeks of remote school for hybrid kids after Thanksgiving. Per the news, we know like 50% of families plan to travel for the holiday, and people are talking about safe Thanksgiving with upwards of 20 people together. It just doesn't bode well for us. CDC says quarantine two weeks after potential exposure. And we know some families just won't care and send kids to in-person school anyway. The rest will keep kids home, and then they will get behind because they aren't in person. Why not just admit that you can't keep people from exposure this holiday and remote for two weeks? When you polled us a few weeks ago, I was fine with class between Thanksgiving and Christmas, but given the very recent news, I have totally changed my mind. The infection numbers are bad and getting worse, and the polls on plans to travel are so disheartening. Thank you.
To District 39 Board, our names are Abby and Steve Carrick. We live in Willmet with our son, a seventh grader at Willmet Junior High, and our daughter, a sophomore at Nutria. We are writing to the Board to express our strong interest in having District 39 implement a COVID surveillance testing program. As the Board likely is aware, Nutria has announced that beginning in mid-November, students and staff will take part in a COVID testing program. Specifically, Nutria will test students and staff once a week using a saliva-based test. Students and staff will produce a small saliva sample at home and then drop off the sample at Nutria. A sample that screens positive for COVID will be presumptive positive, and the associated person will be referred to for a standard PCR test administered by a healthcare professional. Presumptive positive people will not attend any in-person activity at Nutria until it is determined that the person is no longer a risk. We understand that the mitigation strategies currently in place in District 39 are a great start. We recognize that the early identification and isolation of cases is, of course, a required process. However, the current process is not designed to identify asymptomatic cases. Screening programs such as the program outlined by Nutria will additionally identify asymptomatic cases. The combination of the existing strategies plus a testing program would enhance the safety in our schools. This is not our opinion. It is supported by the following facts. Number one, the New England Journal of Medicine article, "The Missing Piece: SARS-CoV-2 Testing and School Reopening," published October 21, 2020. Number two, IDPH Director Ngazi Ezeké, M.D., while speaking at a Northwestern Feinberg School of Medicine/Department of Medicine grand rounds on October 13, voiced support for the use of rapid tests for screening in public schools. Number three, existing and announced screening programs at Nutria, the University of Illinois and Northwestern University. Number four, successful implementation in other school districts such as District 102. We understand that testing may have been discussed within the District 39 Metrics reopening advisory team. We believe that consideration of a testing program is a topic for the District 39 Board. To be clear, all the board members should understand how a testing program works, and the decision to either move forward or not move forward must be decided at the board level. At a minimum, we strongly suggest that the Board engage Dr. Edward Campbell, Ph.D. of Loyola University, to do a short presentation to the Board on testing programs. Dr. Campbell is an associate professor in the Department of Microbiology and Immunology at Loyola University. He is also a parent and school board member in the Grange Brookfield Elementary School, District 102. He helped design and implement the screening program in District 102 and consulted to Nutria in the design of their screening program. Our understanding is that this note will be entered into the minutes of the Board.
So, one last question. Michelle Coffey. Good evening. Although I'm not happy about switching D-39 schools to fully remote on November 30, I can understand why the choice has been made to a certain extent. Our schools seem to be one of the safest places for our children. The teachers, principals, and staff have done an amazing job of making sure COVID doesn't spread within our schools. Shutting down school on November 30 sounds like shutting down school for a long time. I believe we deserve to know the real plan, and if you don't have one, you should. Having our children hold on to hope that they will return to school on December 7 and then finding out December 4 that they are remote for another week and then doing that week by week is crushing. Please consider the progress of our children, our children have made, have been making by being back in school. Please consider all the ways in which remote learning negatively impacts these children. Don't force them to go back to remote learning indefinitely when you've been able to keep them in school without issue these past seven weeks. Thank you.
Was that the last one?
We have, Lisa, we have someone from the audience requesting to do an in-person comment.
Please come forward.
Thank you so much. It is not my intent to invite disorder into this process, which I respect very much. I just wasn't sure if it was a good opportunity, but I think after hearing some of the other public comments, that it is. I'm Dawn Taylor. For those that don't know, I'm a 17-year employee of District 39 at Willmet Junior High School and also the co-president of the WEA. I've never spoken publicly at a board meeting, but feel compelled to do so in defense of my colleagues. To be clear, our passion for commitment and in-person instruction remains resolute. We recognize, as a dear friend and colleague put it, that there are competing nobilities in the great debate about COVID-19 and its impact on in-person instruction. Each and every stakeholder believes their position is noble and just because it is. Our pursuit for a safe work environment for ourselves, our students, and our administrators is noble and just. Our pursuit in planning for a necessary pivot is noble and just. Our pursuit in providing the children of District 39 the very best learning experiences possible is noble and just. Our students' parents' pursuit in keeping their kids in school is noble and just. And our administrators and the school board's pursuit in advocating for all of these various stakeholders, which is so incredibly difficult and admirable, is beyond noble and just. We are grateful, the WEA, for the continued collaboration that District 39 administrators, the school board, and the metrics advisory team invite us to be a part of each week, and we look forward to respectfully and productively being a part of that important conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? I'm sorry?
I was just saying, we are not seeing any, anyone else here in person who wants to speak, but we may have a few more comments. No? Are we done?
It's all the public comments.
Okay, then we'll continue with our agenda. The next order of business is the consent agenda under action items. Are there any items that the Board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Mr. Panzika, please proceed with the motions.
I'm moved to approve the personnel report dated November 16, 2020. I move to accept the fiscal year 2020 annual financial audit and comprehensive annual financial report for Willmet Public Schools as presented by Baker Tilly U.S. LLP of Oakbrook, Illinois. I move to approve service agreements with Rapid Reliable Testing LLC and Ambry Genetic Corporation for COVID-19 Testing and Laboratory Services, subject to the final review and approval of the Board's attorney. I move to approve the Ambry PCR COVID-19 testing fee of $20 per test for the 2020-2021 school I move to approve as first reading of the Board of Education Policies 5:10 Equal Employment Opportunity and Minority Recruitment, 5:10 Staff Development Program and Professional Opportunities, 7:10 Equal Education Opportunities, 7:180 Preventing Bullying and Other Aggressive Behaviors, and 7:185 Teen Dating Violence Prohibited. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between October 27, 2020 and November 16, 2020 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $244,653.63. O&amp;M Fund, $108,001. Debt Service, $1,605,622.09. Transportation Fund, $155,379.81. Capital Projects, $398,484. Tort Fund, $589.77. In a total of all funds of $2,512,730.30. I move to approve the manual checks issued between October 27, 2020 and November 16, 2020 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $589,717.49. O&amp;M Fund, $12,771.40. Transportation Fund, $31.48. Our total all funds of $602,520.37. That's the consent agenda.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
John, is he ready?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Alan Sternwiler?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes. The yeas have it, motion carries. Now we'll move on to the adoption of the 2020 levy. Mr. Panzika, please proceed with the motion.
I move to approve the 2020 levy and accompanying resolutions contained herein for requested amounts that can be summarized as follows. Educational Fund, $44,308,218. Operations and Maintenance, $9,642, excuse me, $9,642,757. Transportation Fund, $896,904. Working Cash, $87,174. IMRAF, $383,702. Social Security, $1,359,467. Life Safety, no entry. Tort Immunity, $602,044. Special Education, $391,382. Total aggregate levy of $57,671,648.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
John's is ready.
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Alan Sternwiler?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes. As moved, the 2020 levy is adopted. Now we'll move to conference items. Old business. We've got board work regarding equity.
So, Mr. Steen and I reached out to Dr. Logan. We're waiting to hear back from him about a date as well as his suggestions for the best structure. So that's CBD. I did want to let you know IASB has been holding these great educational options for board members virtually. And so on Thursday, I'm going to watch, it's a Taste of Equity, explore how you can assist in creating an equitable school district for all students. I do think it's geared more towards administrators, but it is an interesting topic and anything relevant. I will share that.
Thank you very much.
Amy, I've seen it. Oh, we can talk offline. We can talk later about it.
Great. Great.
And in terms of other old business, I'll just remind you that we will look at the evaluation next month for the superintendent. Is there any new business?
I would just, again, put a pin on the possible need for a special meeting of the Board at some point in the near future if we make a little more progress on testing and future plans.
Good and welfare. Well, I have some, just in honor of, what was it, Monday, the National School Board Day. I just want to say, I want to let you all know that I appreciate you, your service, and the seriousness with which you've taken this job on. And I know, and the Tribune documented this week, that it is no small task being a board member in the time of COVID. So it's my honor to serve with you, and thank you for all the work that you've done. And I also just want to not let it go by, thanks to the administration and staff for all the continued commitment. It has been relentless since March. There's never a let-up, and you keep at it, you keep coming to work, and you keep solving really complicated problems. And I think that you can hear tonight, but just to bring it home, those parents and children who are able to attend school, it makes a difference for them. And their parents are grateful, and they are grateful, we are grateful. So thank you very much. So we do not have a need for executive session this evening. So I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Will the clerk call the roll? Is Nancy still there?
Yeah.
She's getting her microphone queued up here.
Johnson's ready.
Yes.
Frank Panzika.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes.
Mark Steen.
Yes.
Alan Sternwiler.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes. Meeting adjourned, and the time is 10:33. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.